All right, um, let's call the meeting to order. Happy New Year, everyone. Today is, well, Happy Newish Year. It's Tuesday, January fourteenth, uh, seven thirteen P M. Laney, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Laura Johnson, here. Ross Jordan, here. Burns, here. Beryl, here. Or, here. Ken, here. Connie.
Yes.
Meeting calls to order at seven thirteen P M.
Great, thank you. Um, so we will start with public comment as a quick reminder for folks. Uh, we welcome your comments and value your input. We generally do not respond during public comments, as I think folks probably know. Uh, those who wish to speak are required to sign in. Thank you for doing that. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Uh, comments are limited to five minutes. If the timer goes off during your comment, please finish up your thought and conclude. And if you wrote your comments, if you want to give a copy of those to Laney, so she can include them in the minutes, that would be appreciated. And of course, we ask that speakers conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. So our first commenter tonight is Ellie Kirschner.
Hi, D ninety-seven, I'm Ellie Kirschner. And today I'm here to talk about some things about D ninety-seven. Number one, I'm really enjoying the One Book One District, and I think it should be ongoing for the future. I also want to talk about how the teachers in D ninety-seven are. I'm a second grader at Longfellow, and I have Mr. Wenshaw and Ms. Masterson, and they are a dream. Ms. Masterson said right before the Thanksgiving break that she never woke up being like, ugh, I have to go to work, because she loves her job. I actually have five teachers. I have three assistant teachers and, uh, two teachers. I have students in my class with special needs. And I feel like the teachers really help everybody get what they need. For first graders, I have Ms. Scott and Mr. G, who sadly left after his first year, and they were amazing. For kindergarten, I have Mrs. Perry, who was also good at helping people get what they need. I really like all of my teachers because they help everybody. Lastly, I heard you were coming to an agreement about a contract. I think that is great, because I don't think that it's fair that my teachers have been working under an expired contract. So thank you for that. Thank you for your time tonight.
Hey Ellie, can we tell you something?
What?
We got, we reached a tentative agreement on Saturday with our teachers. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there.
That's okay. Erica Shannon?
Hello.
Hi.
I am a member of the D ninety-seven OPTA. This year marks my twenty-fifth year of teaching and my twenty-third year as a teacher here in District Ninety-seven. I currently teach the fourth and fifth grade orchestras at Hatch, Irving, Lincoln, and Mann Elementary Schools. In the wee hours of the morning on Sunday, January twelfth, I was pleased to see the news that the OPTA bargaining team and this Board of Education had reached a tentative agreement in contract negotiations. Following fifteen months of bargaining and a fifteen-hour day, I imagine that finally being ready to progress to the next step is a welcome news to everyone directly involved in the bargaining process. I'm looking forward to reading the proposed agreements once it is ready to be shared with the OPTA members. I very much hope that it proves to be the agreement we have been hoping for and leads to a contract that ensures safe working conditions for all teachers, one that recognizes teachers as experts in our fields, one that demonstrates that teachers are respected and supported by all levels of administration, and one that rewards our collective talent and loyalty as hard workers with fair and equitable wages. Thank you.
Annabelle Harum?
My name is Annabelle, and I'm talking about my challenges with math. I feel like nobody cares about what I ever need, and they just place me in whatever math class is easier for them, is easier for them. In the past, I've had many experiences with massive acceleration. In second grade, I had to zoom into a third-grade math class during their math time, which was extremely hard to navigate, especially in the second grade. In third grade, I had to go upstairs for a fourth grade, to a fourth-grade class for math, which was still difficult. In fourth grade, the same thing, I just went to health hall. Then in fifth grade, I would have had to bus over Julian, miss parts of E L A and all library, which was my favorite special at the time, and ended up learning, ended up learning most of my math throughout that year through enrichment courses from Mr. Packer. Please make this, please make the acceleration process in middle school easier than it was in my elementary school experience. It make me feel like you care about my success. I feel like almost nobody listens to my needs, always putting someone else before me. The people who do listen and try to do something, I thank you for that. The people who do not, I ask how and why. How hard is it to move me one class and then to know I would do well in? And why prevent me from the learning opportunity which schools of courses and which school is supposed to be? If you do not, if you do not listen in the first place, I hope that you do now and dedicate a little of your time to help me with this issue and give me a chance to double accelerate. Also, please respond to my Let's Talk About Your Passing Period's book conversation.
Thank you. Tina Harley?
Hello, I'm Tina Harley. I'm a parent of Annabelle, who we just heard from. She's a sixth grader at Julian. I also have a kindergartner and a two-year-old. It is sad to hear Annabelle talk like this. I wish I could tell her this is not true. And however, I have to question if our district cares to meet the needs of our advanced students. Personally, we have had repeated issues in the acceleration program, far too much to mention for the time allowed it here. And however, I welcome others to reach out if they want more details and are facing the same challenges. For years, we have fought to try to get her what she needs over and over, and it's exhausting. Every year, it's like a new challenge with some other new scheduling issue or hoop to jump through. I've heard from many parents, other parents in the, in D ninety-seven, from every school at D ninety-seven with the same issues for years now. Um, I originally brought this up to our old administration pre-pandemic, so we've been kind of fighting this issue for quite a while. Um, the system currently, as it, as it is set up, in my opinion, is not equitable, and it is too parent-driven to receive single-subject acceleration like math. You have to apply, schedule meetings, follow up, take a test on a Saturday, fix schedules, email some more. Every time me and my husband and I have to go through so much to get the math that meets my daughter's needs, I think about what the parents who work multiple jobs or very demanding jobs, what about those that are not in good physical or mental health? What about single parents? What about the ones that didn't see the email or if a flyer went home? Uh, what about parents with twice-exceptional kids or kids who have other things that need assistance with like anxiety or A D H D? The list can go on for all the families that this process for entry into acceleration could be a barrier. Uh, and then when they get to fifth grade, so in elementary, then they get to fifth grade, if they are accelerated, a single subject, they then are expected to get on a bus, often by themselves or with just a couple other kids from their school. To miss the fortune of their day in elementary, they're finally here there, to leave their peers, and then go over to the middle school. Um, once at the middle school, if they need to be challenged even more, double acceleration has a definitely different set of rules and processes to get into that program. Why can't we give our advanced learners the math that they need in the building that they attend without so many hoops? If it was a student that was struggling in middle school math, would we think busing them to elementary to get the math they need is acceptable? Of course not, that's absurd. Nobody would ever recommend that. So why are we recommending leaving the building for students that need to be challenged? As a parent, there's so much guilt about standing up here asking that my kid and others be given more opportunities to learn when they are meeting the basic needs. However, there are many studies that show that gifted children are not challenged, they will end up doing poorly in high school and college. I actually have lived this. There is also a great amount of research that shows damages done to their mental and emotional health. As a district, when we are not meeting their needs, we are saying that we do not care about them, as Annabelle has shown us as well. I hope as our district finalizes the middle school redesign and as we are launching this new Access to Algebra, which is an accelerated program, you will take into consideration our experiences and finally solve some of these shortcomings. Overall, we liked D ninety-seven, and given the option to stay or leave, our daughter told us she wanted to stay and fight and make the district better for others. I do want to say that the teachers in the M T S S team we had at Irving were wonderful, working within the system that the district created. Um, I'm just going to mention their names, because as I said what they did, I always get choked up. So I just want to say, um, thank you to Savannah Hybough, Betsy Parkinson, and Paul Becker. It is because of the teachers and this M T S team that we are still here fighting to make a difference for all. Thank you.
Eric Friedman?
Hi, I'm Eric Friedman, parent in District Ninety-seven, and I want to share some thoughts about Access to Algebra. Um, this program offers the opportunity for most strong students to skip a year of middle school math, either by passing a supplemental class or by testing out with a qualifying math test score. And the score, the score thresholds that District Ninety-seven has set are usually between the eightieth and ninetieth percentiles. So to skip a year of math, you've got to be good, but you don't have to be a genius, eightieth to ninetieth percentiles. And this points to a clear conclusion. Students who are strong in math don't need three years of middle school math. And this is not a novel idea, it's not something I just came up with. It's what underlies the Access to Algebra program. So a lot of people in the ring today agree that students who are strong in math don't need three years of middle school math. And this is why I find it so problematic that District Ninety-seven has been bending over backwards to exclude students from Access to Algebra because they skipped a year of math in elementary school. These are some of the strongest math students in our school district, and strong math students often don't need three years of middle school math. It doesn't make sense that District Ninety-seven excludes students who skipped a year of math in elementary school from Access to Algebra. So you may be wondering, why have I been so vocal about this? Since, as many of you know, this is not the first time I've, I've brought the subject up. And it's rooted in my experiences with District Ninety-seven administrators when they bent over backwards to exclude my daughter from the program. So to be very, very clear, the teachers in District Ninety-seven have been fantastic, but the administrators have been disappointing. Um, some have privately told me that they disagree with excluding accelerated students from Access to Algebra, but they're constrained by District Ninety-seven's rules. Others have just seemed uninterested in doing the right thing for my child until I filed a formal grievance. And filing a formal grievance shouldn't be needed to get the right outcome for a kid. So as I became more vocal, I've heard from other parents of accelerated kids, and a lot of them also had bad experiences trying to get the right outcomes to their kids. You've heard some just before me. By excluding accelerated students from Access to Algebra, District Ninety-seven has created a system that is fundamentally adversarial with parents. Um, the administration claims to allow double acceleration, but by excluding accelerated students from Access to Algebra, in requiring different and much more difficult processes, they create an unfair and inequitable system. They're bending over backwards to prevent students from double accelerating. Um, to me, it feels like gaslighting when the administration pretends that Access to Algebra is not acceleration or pretends that the current approach is not exclusionary. This type of behavior, it doesn't create trust. The current system is one in which parents feel that they have to fight for their kids rather than partner with the administration. Um, I fought for my kid, and now I'm advocating to fix the system for others. Um, there's probably a few District Ninety-seven administrators who hate me for this, though they've always been polite. Um, but it shouldn't be necessary to fight, um, but it is in the current system. And if District Ninety-seven doesn't want an adversarial relationship with parents, then it needs to have systems that aren't inherently adversarial. And that means inclusion, not exclusion. So excluding accelerated students from Access to Algebra, it's number eight. It's not good for students, and it's not good for District Ninety-seven's relationship with parents. The board can fix this by letting accelerated students participate in Access to Algebra, and the best way to do that is today.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your public comments. We appreciate it. Uh, and next up, we have Superintendent Remus.
Thanks. So as we're pulling up the deck, I just want to, um, it's always nice to have, and we always appreciate having student voices at the board table, so I want, um, the students that are in the room to know that this is, everything that's here is all about you and making sure the system works for you. So we are, uh, listening to what you share and, and appreciate what you've shared tonight. I will say that, um, on tonight's, um, agenda, we have a number of presentations. One of them is, uh, called Our Commitment to Math Excellence, where we will be, um, posting the questions that we've had and our responses to that. Because I think one of the things that we acknowledge is we have really been working to make sure that our math offerings are standards-based, that we reflect the best practices, that we are aligned to our equity policy, that we are aligned to rigorous instruction for all students, that we are responding to what the field says, and also to, uh, the practices in our high school. And so we have been doing all those things, but we acknowledge that we could be more clear about those things. So tonight's presentation is an attempt to put the questions up and our answers, and so we look forward to the ongoing dialogue and really continuing to meet the expectations, certainly of our students and of our families, because we are committed to the appropriate rigorous level of education in math and every other subject for each of our students. Also on the agenda tonight, um, are presentations about, um, our school improvement and our middle school redesign. We're very excited, all of this work happening in a manner that reflects our equity policy in terms of this district being everybody's district, and that everything we do needs to keep in mind that not one student should ever be left out of our vision. And you'll see that in the way that we are coming together across different roles, teachers, administrators, and other staff to figure out what the future of our middle schools looks like. And at Julian, we've got the Julian team here, uh, all decked out in their red shirts. We're talking about, um, what that work looks like on the ground in real practice. We'll also have a presentation on staffing and some of the work that we're going to be doing to engage external partners to push our thinking in terms of equity and why, and, and also strategic staffing and, uh, how we're using data and building systems to make sure that we're being efficient and smart with our resources with this most important, um, process of making sure we've got our, our staff aligned. And related to that is creating systems like registration, because the more you have good data, the better you can have better staffing. And then the more energy we have in the system to make it better, um, in terms of instruction and student experience. So all of these, um, presentations tonight are, um, reflecting, um, our commitment to continuously getting better with our systems. I want to say on this next slide here, um, there's also, you know, all the work we do in the district, and then we, oh, I, I'm waiting for someone else to change the slide, and I have the power right on my hands, so. There is, Illinois Vision Twenty Thirty is something that's been being talked about, um, across the state. So today, and I'm just putting it here for awareness, this isn't an action item, although, um, states, uh, I mean, different districts across the state, boards are considering resolutions. There are draft resolutions provided on the, uh, Illinois Vision Twenty Thirty, um, website. I do want to just flag some things and for the board, just so we can be thinking about, where, where this board and our community stands. Uh, Michael, are you able to click here for an overview deck?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so what you can go to is, this is a deck provided uh, by the various organizations that are coming together to say, hey, Illinois, let's come together around a shared vision. And so again, there's draft resolutions. So here's the deck that they've provided, and you can see, you can keep scrolling to this next agenda slide. Those three areas, future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding are the three main pillars of this, um, plan that is being put forward for boards to consider. And I want to say that, uh, certainly, there is a lot here to agree with, and there is a lot of things that we and all districts would get behind. Um, so if you scroll up, let's take a look, a little bit, look, and I want to flag some, um, some critical questions for us to consider. So here's all the organizations, uh, that are behind that, uh, plan, uh, really reputable, uh, organizations in our state. Um, so if you keep going, so this is their call to action. So Future Forward Learning, so if you stop right there, those are the big, uh, four ideas. And if you scroll one more, uh, Michael, so just, again, there's a lot to consider here, but let's just take one, again, here, lots to agree with about the importance of safety, career education, really making sure we're attracting excellent educators. I want to flag this one around considering mandates. So part of what's being proposed here is preserving local educators and school boards to opt into some of these curricular mandates. And so that's something for us to think about, because, um, what there may be in, um, some curricular mandates that we feel should be statewide and shouldn't be, you know, locally determined. So for example, I guess one question I would ask is, what kinds of curricular decisions or what kinds of, um, mandates would be local? And which do we agree as a state are required for us in, in terms of important for all students to know or all districts to be committed to? So that's a question and something maybe for us to consider, um, asking. I don't know the answer to it, but it's a flag, uh, of a question. So if you go to the next one, future-focused, uh, keep going, I'm sorry, to the next, and their shared accountability, you can see these are the major, uh, areas that they're talking about. On the next slide are the, um, ideals. I would say there's a lot here to agree with, um, in terms of really looking at growth and proficiency and meaningful measures, and really getting away from this idea of ranking schools, but rather which schools are, uh, achieving and going, meeting or exceeding those standards, and really meaningful assessments. This is an important conversation to have, um, how are we measuring success? And I know it's a conversation we're having here, um, at our table, and so certainly to have it statewide would be beneficial. This, uh, the next area is around funding. So if you go, uh, Michael, to the, this is the predictable funding, different aspects of this, uh, area. But then to the next slide, under the ideals, again, if you scroll up right here, um, this idea of funding E B F, certainly important. That is just like we are charged within our district to think about equitable resource allocation across our schools within the district. This is certainly, uh, evidence-based funding is the state's effort to take care of all kids across the state of Illinois, not, for that not to be dependent on the tax-based variation across the state. So certainly, uh, something that would, um, jive with our equity policy. The one I want to flag here is, um, the life safety projects. What's being talked about here is that, um, you know, kind of bifurcating the, uh, tax levy process so that, um, there would be a separate process for, um, uh, safety needs versus education needs. And a flag I have here is, that could be risky, um, because it's still one pool of money and one pool of public resources. And so if we start to kind of pull out the safety investment separately, what might be the risk of that growing? And the investment in education tax levy shrinking? And how are those decisions then made? And how much do they vary across the state of Illinois? Might be something for us to think about. So again, um, I'll be talking to, uh, colleagues, and I welcome any questions that the board has, um, now or later, that would be helpful. Um, but I, I do think a question in front of the board for the future is, is this something that we would want to adopt? Either the, um, the template resolution, resolution that's been posted or some variation of that? And different boards are thinking about that differently. So I wonder if there's any preliminary questions or anything that I can answer?
Is there a timeline that they're specifically looking at for this?
I did, uh, did, I did a search, um, is there a timeline? And nothing came up. So I don't think so, but I will say that it is a timely discussion right now. I, um, I've checked in with colleagues, and people are putting it on their agendas in the, this month or next month, and so I think it's an active discussion right now. Great, uh, so welcome any, uh, questions there. And then the, the next slide is just a reminder that our, uh, calendar is underway, but we did put in our weekly, um, wrap-up. I keep forgetting, that's me, not you, Michael, I get to, okay. So, uh, you know, we put in our weekly wrap-up that we are looking to bring forward and finalize our calendar, but we recognize that families need to know those key dates, um, planning the, the lives of our families. And so what we can tell you here is that we've got, um, targeted dates for the middle school connections for that fifth grade to sixth grade transition. That's an optional, um, opportunity for our rising middle school students. Uh, we expect that classes will begin the week of August eighteenth. Uh, that's the week of winter break, spring break, and, um, that our last day of classes is within that window. And again, we'll be coming forward with a specific calendar um, in our meeting with internal groups to, to do that, yes?
Uh, thank you for this. I think we were just talking about the calendar. Um, I totally, like, spaced out last year, so I didn't realize it until this upcoming year, the switch to have, um, graduation on, like, a weekday in the evening. Have there been any considerations or just like a survey of parents? If, if that's like the best?
What kind of switch?
The, um, the last time I attended graduation, it was like on a Friday. Um, so just having that, um, in the beginning of the week, um, if that was a, a move that was like intentional, um, just thinking about parents who may not have flexibility in their schedule, um, to have it on a Monday, um, so just wondering about it.
Yeah, I think historically, it's always on the second to last day of school, because the eighth graders don't come to school on the last day. And, oh, so it depends on when the last day of school is, counting down to school. So I think it's always been on, like, one of them always gets stuck. Like, Brooks or Julian always gets on a weekday. Sometimes you get lucky with a Friday, sometimes you have Tuesday and Wednesday, sometimes Monday, Thursday. And it's also at the mercy of the high school schedule.
That's right, so there are at least three different factors at play. And I think you named all of them, Holly. Uh, one is wherever the end of the school year is. Second, we flip, um, which graduation happens first, Brooks or Julian, from year to year. And then we actually are kind of, uh, with D ninety, they also have their graduation at the high school, so it's kind of like between the two districts and the three schools, since they have one middle school, we usually have to place within that week. And so we don't have a lot of flexibility, uh, in that regard. Um, great, so then, um, I am excited, we've got, um, I, who do we have? I think we have, uh, Lauren here. Hello, come on up. We, uh, we have, as you probably know, are really, um, exciting and rigorous in the, you know, um, come on up here, uh, you're up, you're up here, yes. Come on up. And so, um, we have a librarian team, a teacher librarian team in our buildings that's just, uh, always coming up with what we call good trouble, right? And, oh, please have a seat.
Okay.
Um, and so we're really excited, uh, about this, uh, next, uh, you know, this year's annual One Book One District. And, um, a letter went out to families on Friday, and I think you're here to tell us a little bit about what's planned for the year. Yes? Yes, would you like this? Do you know that it controls the?
I, I believe, I believe.
Yes, there you go.
I'm Jorge Conley, I'm the librarian at Whittier.
I'm Ms. Vivian, I'm the librarian at Mann.
Patrick Robinson, the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools. And we think about that. Um, we're just so excited to, um, just kind of present our One Book One, One District for twenty twenty-five. And so first, just want to say thank you to our incredible teacher librarians for just kind of coming together and really just kind of thinking about some of our district initiatives and looking at what book kind of aligns to some of the initiatives and working together, working with their schools and really, um, trying to identify a book that will really bring our community together, um, as a district, um, and working together to get the numbers, do all of the things that they need to do to really make sure we get that book in the hands of all of our students. The goals of One Book One District is that every student in the district is in love with literacy and to really foster a sense of community um, around books and literature. And so One Book One District is just when our teacher librarians partner with the district and our school P T Os to provide all of our families our and our school PTOs to provide all of our families, our students with a copy of the book. And so all of our families have the opportunity to read the book at home and also together in the schools. We also provide an opportunity for families to listen to some of our chapters read out loud. So every chapter has a read aloud by guest readers. And then there's also a kickoff activity at some of the schools. But I'm going to turn that over to Lori.
Yes.
And Lori, do you want to have the power to control?
Okay. So one book, one district is a literacy and community-based program where all elementary students and families and then some middle school students read the same book at the same time. And the idea is to form a sense of community around a book, have kids talking about a book and have some fun. So the book that we selected this year is Otter. This is a book about, it's based on a true situation, an otter in California that was orphaned and then found a new community. So it's a lot about belonging and making your own way and a little bit about the environment. And so it was kind of perfect for this. And it also, so all of the elementary school students receive a copy of the book and then some middle schoolers get it as well. PKP and EC got this book, which is called A Sea Otter to the Rescue. So it's kind of a similar thing, but a little bit easier and with more pictures for that. I'll go to the next one. So the reading occurs for, it's different in every school. So in some of the schools, the teachers read it to the students each day. In some of the schools, we partner with the families and we ask the families to read at home. And it just kind of varies based on what the schools' needs are. But the idea is that we're a partnership between families and school and that everybody can be reading the same book at the same time. We're reaching diverse learners. Patrick mentioned we recorded, all the librarians recorded a chapter so that kids can listen to it if that's how they prefer rather than read it. And then we also bought Spanish copies of the books for our Spanish-speaking students. D-97 provided the books for the students and then the PTOs provided the books for the staff. So every school's PTO paid for all of the books for the staff and everybody's got a copy. So here's some pictures from the kickoff. We kicked it off this past Friday. It was very fun. We built a lot of suspense at the schools with clues to try to get the kids guessing what the books were going to be. And then on Friday, we had a big reveal. So at some schools, we had assemblies. Other schools did it in their nests or their dens or their classrooms. You can see up there and Holmes, they dressed as a lobster and a jellyfish. The middle picture is Dr. Mosley and I dressed as zookeepers and we were looking for a missing animal from the zoo and then we came across the book. And then you can see the beautiful door at Irving that was decorated by a parent to reveal it. Here are some pictures of the kids getting the books. At Hatch, they dressed as scuba divers that were swimming through trying to find the books. And the kids, when we finally told the title, they went crazy. There was a lot of screaming happening and everybody was really excited. And so then since then, we've been reading it and it's been a lot of fun.
And the jellyfish, this is the second time the jellyfish has made an appearance in the librarians, because the jellyfish was also a candidate.
Oh, right, yes, for the election.
A candidate for the life event.
Normal and jelly, yes. Yeah, we love to see. And so then this month, there's going to be a lot of different events as we read the book. There's going to be some recycled material sculpture contests at NAMM and at many of the other schools. At Whittier, we're going to have a design an otter habitat where kids make habitats and then walk around to other classrooms to see it. There's weekly and daily trivia questions, different reading buddies partner to read the books, classroom read alouds, there's going to be a virtual visit to the Morro Bay Aquarium otters and talking to the zookeeper.
Aquarist?
Aquarist there. Some students, some classes are going on field trips to the Shedd Aquarium. So we're kind of tying in with science and all kinds of different topics there. We included the link to our one book, one district hub that has everything that you need to follow along on the journey, including the reading schedule, activities and a live otter cam if you want to see what the otters are up to.
I wonder if we should click into it right now, Michael? If you do the click here.
Sure.
Because the live otter cam is pretty cool.
It's very cute, yeah. So at the top, Michael, it says live otter cam. And then you have to click on the play. They might be sleeping. It can't make it bigger, it has to be small. Yeah, I think I can see it a little bit moving, yeah.
You can see it, yeah.
It's hard to see on the screen, I think, but it's a little dark.
Yeah.
We've just been having play in the library all day and then sometimes I'm talking and all the kids start screaming because the otter's doing something cute, so. Yeah, it's fun. So we wanted to say thank you for your support and we're really excited about it. And it's kind of a fun thing for the kids and all the community.
And thank you for all of the work for getting us to this point. So thank you, thank you on the team.
And your creativity, yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to look at otter cam for the rest of the.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that takes us to a jet on of 7.1, Middle School Redesign Julian Logic Model.
Yep, so here comes Team Julian. Please note, they have their shirts on. Their shirts have important messages on them. Jayhawks together, birds of a feather. So we have our full team up here, coming on up here. And we have two presentations. We're going to begin with the Julian logic model, your school improvement planning. And then we're going to move right into the middle school redesign work. And so if it's all right with the board, we would like to kind of do both presentations and then take your questions at the end. I think we're just getting on here. Here's the.
Do you want me to project?
No, I don't. Michael, you're projecting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, thank you everyone for the opportunity to share with you our logic modeling of Julian Middle School.
Yep, and so like I said, we're excited to bring forward the work happening at Julian School Improvement as well as the redesign.
Yeah.
And so, did you get it? Okay, so we're going to, you know, these are the same framing slides that we've had. You know, everything we're doing connected to our equity policy, everything we're doing, again, just like we were talking about with Illinois 2030, thinking about the criteria we're using for success and really being critical about what, how could that be different? Looking at data over time and setting our benchmarks using our peer districts as the context, that math level data and of course, that street level data of like, what's the real deal of student experience? So these are all the different levels of data that are on our radars. And so these are the areas of focus in terms of our district-level focal cohort, student cohort and our school level. Again, centering the experiences of students that have been historically kind of on the periphery or outside of periphery. What happens when we put their experiences at the center of our focus is we make a better system for everyone. And that's what our school improvement teams are doing. So you'll see that in practice. These are our four areas of transformation goals. And so this work today really sits, everything's connected, but in this idea of we design for all and really thinking about core instruction and school improvement. And this is the goal statement in terms of what we're trying to do with our school improvement planning. So you can take a look at that. And, you know, these are the main areas of work. So I'm going to hand it off to Luis.
Thank you. So as we are going to really designing these presentations in our logic models as well, we really are very intentional about how do we really are improving our tier-one instruction or what's happening in the classrooms or daily day task and learning experience of our students. And the way that we do it is that through that collaborative teachers and building that capacity, capacity is something very important. And the way, the best way to do it is looking into those strengths of our staff. So and then also with the feedback of our community, how do we involve our families? How do we, through these opportunities that we have in that shared transformation as we are developing our teams to lead some of this work? And this is some of the work that we did together. So these questions, there are some questions that, sample questions that actually we take in our teams in a regular basis. Patrick and I, we meet with our sites like in a weekly basis. We have these one-on-one conversations with the principals and with our teams. And we're able to really to go deep into this and go into the reflection and really be intentional about how we're doing and how we're moving forward. And then those questions as well, they are the drivers as we look about designing our logic models and really being also intentional about identifying those resources, adult practices, that professional learning opportunities that actually will make the change that we intended to have. So the way that you've got a little overview, high level, I know this has been like shared with you before, but also we want to, you share with the rest of our community that logic models are very intentional as they're concentrating those outcomes. And then with that, we're very intentional about how those resources are being used and those actions and then the evidence. How do we know that actually this is doing what we are intended to do? That's one of the biggest pieces as well as we look into the actions is that, that those strategies that we are learning, that are actually, we're tracking them. That's kind of what we call the secret sauce, isn't it? Like the important ingredients about what we're doing and how we change our practices, they are reflected in our logic models. So with that, this is an ongoing, an improving process. And we will have opportunity after today to bring back our team in April 8th with an update of their work. And with that, it's my honor to pass the, let's on to our team.
All right. Thank you, Dr. DeLeon, for the introduction of the logic model. And happy to be here tonight to share our goals at Julian that we've already begun work on and give a little picture of what we're doing. So tonight, I have a variety of members of the logic model team who are up here. But I have my two associate principals, Adrian Court and Dewan the Fountain Dotson, as well as our two MTSS teachers, Rawa Casell and Nora Flynn, who are going to share the work that we've been doing so far this year with me. So as I spent some time at Julian in the spring incoming as the principal, it became clear to me that a top priority for our school was going to be reinvigorating the sense of community and togetherness, which from a heart-led leader has been led to our theme, like birds of a feather, jayhawks together. So I made it my personal goal to help guide this community together to make a stronger sense of togetherness, together in decision-making, together in learning and together in the way that we work and we do. In the summer, our teacher leaders met prior to institute days to begin this work, coming back together as a community. Our first step was to define what it meant to be a jayhawk. And I asked our teachers to share words that they thought should describe our graduates. Some of those words included inclusive, critical thinker, connected, aware, empathetic, ally, thoughtful, compassionate and intelligent. We also took the time to define what adult practices that would support these outcomes. Adult practices such as modeled behavior, high expectations, growth mindset, consistency, accountability and mutual respect. Much of our work this year has been to address these adult behaviors and ensure we are creating an environment that fosters these incredible student outcomes. On our first day together as a staff, we began our journey of healing our community together. We talked about the way that we need to communicate openly and support each other to ensure we are modeling our desired student outcomes. We have continued to address this in staff meetings and super team meetings by learning about best practices in social emotional learning, behavior interventions and restorative justice. We have done learning around the language of emotions, verbal de-escalation of unexpected student behaviors, understanding behavior as communication and collective efficacy with our school-wide expectations. We are making shifts in the feedback we give students even in the hallways, such as safe body and hands to self. And approaching unexpected behavior with curiosity and care instead of naming and blaming. We are reframing unexpected behavior and increasing our adult rational detachment by understanding that students aren't giving us a hard time, but they're having a hard time. This reframe helps us be curious about what these behaviors are communicating and what is at the root of them to better support struggling students and making more expected and positive choices. We have also structured our administrative team, student success coaches and social workers to support teachers at every grade level with accountability and reteaching. By beginning to implement restorative practices throughout our classrooms and reframing our approach to challenging behaviors, this ensures that we are building an equitable system that supports our focal cohort and therefore all of our students. Our administrative team is collaborating with our student success coaches and social workers to better refine structures that align with the social discipline window. We are modeling accountability as adults and helping students by teaching expectations, providing opportunities for reflections, facilitating restorative conversations and partnering with parents for student growth and psychological safety. All of these systems and learning as a staff have supported our control and support with students to work toward a restorative culture. Students have engaged in our school-wide expectations during middle school connections, Welcome Week, a review after Thanksgiving and even Welcome Back Week in January. Our work in coming together is how we have framed an already made strides in our belonging goal. Last spring, 34% of students responded favorably in their sense of belonging. This fall, we were very encouraged to see that 42% of students responded favorably to the questions in the sense of belonging area on the Panorama survey. We are excited by this early mark of progress and hope to have this grow by the end of the year. Looking at our focal cohort students, 40% of our black students responded favorably as compared to 42% of white students. 53% of our ML students responded favorably compared to 41% of non-ML students. Interestingly, the only question that marked a decrease in the sense of belonging was the question, how much respect do students at your school show you? With only 29% of students responding favorably. We hope that by continuing our work to support student behavior, we will see a direct increase in this area come the spring.
So engagement, last spring, our engagement was at 19% and our goal this spring was to get to 22%. Similar to belonging, engagement has also increased in our data this spring. It already shows a favorable response by 23% of students overall. And we expect to continue on this upward trajectory for spring. Looking at our focal cohort students, 28% of the multilingual students and 21% of our black students responded favorably as compared to 24% of white students. Some of the strategies that we are implementing is designing lessons for all learners using the UDL framework. An important aspect of engagement is access. So universal design provides all students with an access point to grade-level content. Student engagement, sorry, that's right. Student engagement survey rollout and data analysis through advisory to drive instructional decisions within the classroom. So we'd like to use advisory in a meaningful way to not only give SEL lessons, but also to get feedback from students. We're providing ongoing professional development on best practices surrounding our curriculum design and utilization of student goal-setting and self-assessment. design and utilization of student goal setting and self assessment to increase student voice and choice in their learning as much as possible. We want students to take ownership of their learning, providing opportunities for self reflection and goal setting. This is central to the work of engaging students.
So as we pivot to more of the academic side of our school improvement plan, we found it essential to highlight the frameworks that have been driving a lot of our work. So when we look at belonging and engagement, that really is looking at MasLAW's hierarchy of our needs, and when we're looking at students' academic growth, we're really looking at how are we approaching bloom taxonomy to develop our entire learners? So we felt it like we know as administrators and a team, research shows our students have to MasLAW before they can bloom, and that's why we've spent so much time this year on really developing and rebuilding our community in order to help them get to the point that we're really invested in being able to develop student academic growth. So when we look at our IAR math data, this data shows where our current sixth through eighth grade students have performed historically in math on the IAR and our goals for this school year. Given what we know about the hierarchy of needs and student belonging and engagement, it does make sense that last spring we saw a decrease in the number of students meeting or exceeding standards in math for both sixth and seventh grade. In response to this data and to support our staff in understanding where students are performing, our MTSS coordinators facilitated a data dive with our teacher teams. The goals were captured in the graphic up there, and one of the wonderful things about having our teacher leaders lead this work is that they were also modeling for our teachers ways we can make curriculum more accessible for students. So you can see their capture, these were our objectives from teachers, but what am I learning, why am I learning this, and how will I know I've learned it, is really modeling for our staff what we need to see within our classrooms. Based on the data dive, the staff were able to look at where our students were performing and make adjustments to their learning. We have another data dive coming up early February as our students are map testing right now. So we are confident that based on the work our staff are doing, that we will be able to reach our forty five percent growth target in math. The forty five percent growth target represents a five percent growth from last year per grade level, and it's important to note that that marker comes from Anna Collender, who is our district data specialist, and what she had done is looked at where local districts were and made trajectories so that we can move up, and we also want an achievable growth target for students. So some work we've done in addition to the data dive, our school logic model was able to prevent present to all of our staff, reinforcing the concept that we're all teachers of math, not just our math teachers. So looking at how can we look at interpretation and application of graphs inside of all classes, not just their math classrooms. Our amazing district curriculum coordinators worked to develop a CMP three training for our math teachers, and they're also running a facilitation for the math department around making thinking visible. And then we also have our wonderful math MTSS staff tomorrow will be again leading another professional development for a math department that is focused on how we meet students where they're at and how we really build those foundational math concepts.
Next, we're going to talk a little bit about the IRA reading data. If you just take a look, our fifth graders came in at sixty one percent of them meeting or exceeding the standards. We are expecting that sixty four percent of them will meet and exceed the standards. Look at, let's look at seventh grade, seventh graders. They came in as fifth graders, forty seven percent, then in sixth grade, fifty four point one percent, and then we're expecting to see them grow to fifty seven percent. Now let's take a look at that eighth grade data. In fifth graders, they came at came in at forty eight point one percent. They had a little dip in seventh grade, forty four point six percent, which is like a three point five percentage point. But we have the expectation that we are going to grow them and that we will have at the very least forty seven percent of our eighth graders meeting or exceeding the standards. Now I'm sure you're wondering, how are we going to get there? Not a problem, I'll share with you. One of the things that I had the privilege of engaging in is a data talk led by our wonderful MTSS interventions, Ms. Casell and Ms. Flynn. As a new person coming into the school, it was rewarding to see distributive leadership. We know that the work does not start and end only with the administrative team. Therefore, you must have knowledgeable, supportive team members who can carry this work. Now this team, we've been working on the climate and culture. We know that instruction is our primary focus. However, we want to make sure that Julian is a safe, inclusive environment for all of our students. So again, it was rewarding for me to sit alone with the teachers, watch them go through the data wall, create some small groups, and then talk about the standards that they are going to address and differentiate in small group instruction. We are believing and expecting with just that small tool, looking at the data, looking at the standards, going back and differentiating, we will see that our kids, that eighth grade group is going to make growth, which will affect our overall scores. So the goal is for fifty six percent of our kids to be meeting and exceeding the standards. We know that writing is a crucial part of the ELA curriculum and instruction. However, we've gotten away from it. So what are we doing at Julian? Well, number one, we're participating in the department meetings with Brooks as well. So a kid from Brooke should be able to transfer into Julian and see some of the same instructional practices and vice versa. Another thing, the teachers set and their unit and lesson plan together, and specifically the seventh and the eighth grade team. The sixth grade teachers worked on creating a summative assessment. They took a look at the standards as well as the IRA prompts and tried to model the questions after that. Now, are we teaching to the test? Not at all. We are teaching skills, which is why they looked at the writing standards. Tomorrow, we will engage in department meetings led again by our fabulous MTSS interventionist, so I'm excited about that on tomorrow to be a part of it. And last but not least, they looked at the units to prioritize what type of writing they will focus on so the skills can be addressed. So when our kids get in front of the test, there is less likely to be test anxiety. Our kids are very articulate, but we've got to move that thinking and put it onto paper. So that's some of the work we're doing at Julian, and we will exceed our expectation of fifty six percent.
And so all of the wonderful things that we're seeing our teachers do, the root of that is continuous and intentional learning together. So we have participated in immense amounts of professional development led by our administrators and by our colleagues this year, and so I just wanted to talk about kind of how those levels work. So we do this on a big macro level with our logic model teams, looking at the data and looking at our principles and presenting that back to every staff member. We do this also in a smaller sense with our logic model teams. So after this fall, large group presentation that we were able to do, presenting data and goals. In two weeks, we'll do an ed camp model where teachers are learning from the logic model, team leaders, just really high impact instructional strategies that they can choose based on their personal professional goals. We also learn in super teams, so that's a grade level team, and our focus this year has really been the engagement and belonging goals in that in that space. And that's been led by our administrators really talking very specifically about behavior and how it's a form of communication. So what are our students telling us? What are they telling us by their actions? What are they telling us in their words? What are they telling us in their engagement with the curriculum? We also learn in departments. So tomorrow morning, we're gathering again in our departments, and our departments usually do meet ELA, math, social science, science, right? But we do crosstalk all the time. So our collaboration is usually informal, it's catching someone in the hall, but tomorrow it will be a very formal cross collaboration. Our MTSS teams at Brooks and Julian will present to our math and ELA teams and collaborate with them about the needs of our striving mathematicians and our striving writers. So those are kids who are not quite at grade level yet, and this is that universal design for learning. So thinking about what patterns do those students exhibit and how that illuminates for teachers what's happening with probably most of their students, but it's just more invisible with some of those students. And then we'll talk about the barriers that are faced and how we can reduce those barriers for students to exhibit and express all of their learning. We also collaborate in data dives, and so we'll have one more data dive following this latest math games web round. Our data dives really talk at the team level, so we kind of go from this big data, all staff, and then when we get to data dive, we're talking to team six one, and all four core teachers are there, and we're talking about individual students. And so what would is surprising to you about this student's attainment? What seems like is working for this student? What do I see in social science versus ELA? And how can we leverage what we know together for those students?
So based on our early signs of progress, we believe that our initial plans and models are working well and plan to continue moving forward. We will continue to leverage super teams and staff meetings to engage in professional development opportunities with our staff. We'll continue to have teachers collaborate around our focal cohort data in order to inform interventions and plan for instruction for all. Finally, we will continue to model positive behaviors and approach with curiosity alongside our positive behavior reinforcements to continue to grow into a caring and cohesive learning community at Julian together.
All right, so as we look about transitioning now into our next presentation about the middle school master schedule redesign, it's one like I acknowledge the hard work that our our team is doing, and as you hear in the presentation, it's very intentional, isn't it, about coming together, building capacity, really creating conditions. So the master schedule is another opportunity right here that we have, and that we invest on.
Yep, and so if you actually go, if you want to, you can show the thing for a couple of slides here. So we have, the whole team is up here presenting in in terms of this presentation is Luis Nick and Rawa. So again, here we're in this design for all section of our PowerPoint, and what the team has put together here is like just giving a bird's eye view of the different elements that the team is thinking about in terms of middle school transformation and their and this redesigned work. So for today's presentation is focused on this aspect, the schedule redesign, collaboratively design a schedule that aligns with best practices as well as student and staff needs. And you will hear that theme about whose voices and whose perspectives are really informing what you're going to hear tonight. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the team here to kind of give the the overview.
Thank you. So with that, as you can see, we have our task is universal student success. We want every student to have that access and that opportunity to maximize the learning. And then also, we are framing a lot of our work through AMLE. This is some of the the research that actually shows what middle schools are driven, and they actually should be providing opportunities for how responsive, center students' unique needs, and then also challenging our students through diverse opportunities for them to challenge and grow. The empowering of our students as well, so it's very important to be in all of these schools. Also, the equitable, the equitable is another big component in the ideal in the right middle school. And then also the engaging, how do we engage with the students to foster that relevant opportunities and environment to motivate them to do this work? So I just want to, we have about, as I shared with you back in in the previous presentation about this work, we have a great team, we have our thirty one team members that are highly engaging with each other. We have staff representing all the grade levels, all the programs, very diverse perspectives, and we really are taking the time to engage with each other as well with administrators into really learning and really designing this together and really be very intentional and receptive and responsive, as as you heard about the AMLE drivers from our community, our students, families, and also the resident staff. So with that, I just want to acknowledge everybody who has been part of this work and and it has been fantastic. So in October, that's when we started our process about bringing this team together, not only bringing the team together, but also developing the team, the sense of the team. We have two middle schools coming together and really be very intentional, even the way that we got together and we shared spaces, we were very intentional to mix with each other and get to know each other. November, as well, we went into the team to developing those surveys that the families got, and then in December, we took the time to analyze this data, really going deep into trying to understand the data from our students, our families, our staff, and with that, developing focus group questions that allows to really understand even deeper and really unpack some of the needs as we were learning through this process. January, that's where we are right now, and the through this process, we have been able to identify some priorities based on research, and right now, we're in the process of translating those into actual structures. By the by February, we are tasked, or we have a goal to present to you the the schedule sample or the components to be reflected there, and and then with that, we need to get get on and start preparing for next few years, start realigning our systems and getting our system ready to to implement this this work.
So what's the role of our design team? As Dr. DeLeon noted, we have a very diverse team of staff members, and so our work is really grounded in our shared belief in our best practice because everyone is coming from it through a different lens. Our identity and beliefs and best practices are rooted again in our District Ninety Seven Equity Policy, AMLE, and just general best practices. We review, develop, and provide feedback on our engagement plan for students, parents, and staff. We were put into three separate groups where teachers and staff looked at the student data, the parent data, and the staff data, and we just kind of looked at what was the high level things that each of those different groups thought was a priority when we went through the survey data. We analyzed the data, we collected it, we looked at what would fit with our building and our schedule. There are still possible school visits for team members to participate, seeing those various schedules in action, and then providing feedback on the proposed schedules is what's up next on the docket. So our team's project driving questions, these are the things that we are really committing ourselves to when we are doing that work. So how are we developing a middle school schedule that's responsive to our school, our students, and our community needs? Our community is unique. If you live in Oak Park, you know that. So what are our needs? You know, what is unique to what we need, and how can we make sure that we are meeting those needs while we're redesigning? How do we ensure that we keep our students at the front? Students should always be at the center of our work. How are we engaging with each other in this collective work? This is big work. This is not work that can be done in a silo or in a small group. So how can we leverage everyone's different lens and viewpoint to make sure that we're coming up with a quality product? How are we engaging and elevating student voices in this process? So while we do center students, it's easy to speak on behalf of students, and we want to make sure that we're actually listening to their voices and making sure that we're hearing from them what their needs are. How are we engaging and elevating family voices in this process? So true partnership with families really is listening in on important tasks like this and not just speaking back to families what we think is best for them. And then how are we leveraging best practices and each other's strengths as a staff? So there is research out there about what works really well. We have the AMLE framework, we have other schools that are doing it really well. So how can we take from those best practices and make it our own? So our belief statements, you know, what you believe really serves as the foundation for your decision making. So beliefs shape our priority and our sense of purpose. That's where we really wanted to ground and anchor our work. That's where we really wanted to ground and anchor our work. And these are our team's five belief statements. So we didn't just, you know, chat GPT five belief statements. Or, you know, just pick some random things. We, this was really thoughtfully created. We took some time through a collaborative process and I'll just walk you through that process. So we were in table groups where we sat together. We had discussions about what were our individual beliefs. We had conversations. And then when we agreed on something, we wrote it down on chart paper as a table group. Then we hung up those chart papers and did like a gallery walk. And each team was able to walk around and look and see what the other teams decided was their statements that they believed in. Then we all had little like circle post-it notes, I guess. And we got five of them. And you had a chance to walk around and put them near the belief statements that resonated with you most. So the idea was which statements would have the most post-it notes? Which statements seemed very similar that we could condense and refine and make our own? And then that's how we came up with those five statements. We narrowed them down. And this has become the guiding, really focus of our work and what we're using to frame what we're choosing in our master schedule redesign.
So as we saw and heard from Rawa, we wanted to make sure that we were elevating both student and parent voices. So are you, a lot of you probably engaged in the survey or what the people who had? We had really great response rates from students, staff and families. So we were really pleased to get all of that information. So that survey was given out. And as you heard, we really spent a lot of time digging through what those voices were elevating as priorities to inform even part of those beliefs that, that we came from. Not only did we take the time to do the surveys, but once we analyzed that data and saw some themes, we had created some questions. And that was also a collaborative effort from the group and the whole redesign team. Looking at what can we do, some, go back to some focus groups and ask. So our focus groups also happened in December. Teacher leaders led that from the team. Our PTO meetings at both schools had opportunities to ask those questions and gain feedback as well as let's talk from families. We had three different student sessions, one at each grade level at both schools. Again, led by teacher leaders with a diverse group of fourteen to sixteen students per session. And then also our redesign team is acting as that staff feedback loop. So we have encouraged the staff that are on the middle school redesign team, since they are a cross-section that represents different programs and grade levels, to go back and share the process as it's happening and gain feedback from the people on their teams and grade levels. So we've really encouraged that feedback loop to continue throughout the process as well to make sure that we're really getting some rich context from all of our different stakeholders.
And so the insights that we got from our community, I think that we were very intentional to really take the time to really learn. So we have, as you, as you learned, we surveyed students, the staff and the families. And then as we were unpacking this from what the data was to what does the data is telling us? And how can we use this feedback to inform the design? We really took the time to really see the, this data throughout and really figure it out, what is those interconnected pieces that are important for families? So at the end of this presentation, there's an appendix and there's like slides with, with information that is easier to, easier to read. But I think what we wanna make sure here that this, this represents is that, that the inclusiveness, we wanna make sure that everybody's voice, who took the time to really engage into this, this process, is represented and really valued their voice through this process. So having said that, we are really intended to, to really make sure that those voices, they ended up reflecting in, in our, in our, in the, the product of the schedule that we are bringing forward. So as we have identified, sorry, the priority trends that we have from, from our, from our groups are the, our community is calling for adjusting the length of our structure of class periods with an emphasis on daily schedules for those core classes. Then also expanding those selective opportunities to better meet diverse students' needs, including, for example, cross teams, mixed grade levels, options and also unique offerings. Also the opportunity to have like a soft start mornings where we are addressing and including social, emotional learning and opportunities for students to prepare for, for the day. And that's something that our students and also staff signal through the, to the, and families through the surveys. Also, the, the launch also came through, through our analysis where students are looking at, for this opportunity to really connect and have a structured time where they feel supportive as well during these times. And then also the continue that journey right now that we have about bringing that consistency in between both of the middle schools in programming and those experiences. And as my colleagues mentioned, you know, when a student moves from one school to the other school, it should not be that different. There's always gonna be some uniqueness, but sometimes it shouldn't be that different. So that's also came through our surveys. And then as well about the importance of really defining and really get some work into defining better soar and advisory and how to utilize these times for the purpose that they have and really make sure that we maximize their impact they have in the students. And then also our community is sharing that they would like us to continue working in that transition, not only between fifth and sixth, but also from eight to nine. So the next steps, we have to take these, these trends that you just saw. This, next week, we're meeting with the team and we're gonna translate that into actual schedule structures. What does that look like? We're gonna start playing with that, starting putting that into, into developing collaboratively with them into our, our schedule, the best schedule that meets those needs. And we also identify that, that there might not be like a solution that satisfies everyone. Definitely, we wanna make sure that who do our best and we'll continue working towards that. But also we wanna be transparent with this process. And that's the intent of why we're here today, starting from knowing this information as well. But also we do feel that we are able to, we're gonna be able to meet a lot of the needs. Then once we get that schedule figured out, also we need to coordinate and engage with our Power School internal team and the consultant as well to realign our Power School system and software to accept and really adjust the way that their, their structure is set up. And then with that, we need to continue our communication plan with our students, families and as well with, with you as we presented with you in February. And after that is preparing for a strong start for the school year twenty-six as we are rolling all these pieces and putting it into, into play. And with that, I just wanna say thank you for your time. And I know we, that was a main presentation from both areas, but any questions?
So I just wanna clarify something. First of all, monthly, thank you. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, especially the mentions of things like the feedback loop and really making sure that this is not a, you know, gather stuff and then walk away and then voila, it comes back. There's been a lot of thoughtful process to this. Really quickly, I wanna clarify for anyone who's listening who's not used to how school years are put in because it's in school year twenty-six. That is next year. And so, so it's starting in twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six that that will start. I'm really excited to see it.
Yeah, thank you.
I just have a couple of notes. So similar to Nancy, like, so when it comes back, hopefully we can see this incorporated or if you have like a response now. But like, I think as a middle school parent, I think it was a little overwhelming to me. And so like hearing from parents, I think even like a, I would have middle school connection, something like that for parents. Because I think the expectations are very different. Even unfortunately, some of the behavior that we've seen from parents, I can't see that, right? And they're mirroring that. So I can't tell you how many videos people have offered to share and I respectfully decline. Of parents, you know, involved in physical activity or parents becoming aggressive with other students, other families. And so I think something in the beginning to like set the expectation, I think would be good for parents. Maybe some type of like how to for, I forget the system because I hate it so much. I just tell my husband, you do it. But like how to access our students' grades, like it's always, I'm always like, oh my God, I gotta do this again. So I think like just something that kinda help parents ease into it, especially if you're new to the district. Then ensuring that, and I saw that you said that, but just ensure that there's opportunities for people, the global majority, to have an opportunity to share their concerns. I've heard from teachers at both middle schools. In particular, like, you know, if I have a concern, I don't feel like it's a safe space and where do I go? So what that process looks like? And, and again, this is at both middle schools. But just a place for, for those staff, if they're feeling unseen, unheard, that they can go and there's a place for them to express their concerns. Cause they hold a lot, right? They're holding stuff from students, families, they're going through their own little things. So just wanted to make, hopefully that's like somewhere in this. Yeah, but I, if it's something that's like really pressing that you've been like dealing with, I don't know that less talks out. It, it doesn't feel personal. It just felt like someone's like listening to me if I, if I say something. So just use a crazy example. I'm not that tall. So if I'm like, you know, there's something that's really bothering me, I feel like this is purposeful that you guys keep putting stuff on the top shelf. Like I don't wanna put that in. And that's a silly example, but it's just like something that may not feel like important to everybody else, but it feels really personal and important to me. The other day, my daughter was, she's in Bravo and she was just like, I can't believe we have practice all this ye, this week and we have IAR testing. And she's like, I really wanna focus. So just like scheduling of like events in and out of school during, especially if we're like looking at, a lot of the goals are tied to IAR. So making sure that students have that space so that they're able to do those things. I'm loving that lunchtime is being considered cause it, I went on a field trip and I was like, oh, this is not a lot of time. But then also like student centered spaces, right? So I went back to my college and oh my God, it was so different. But I was really impressed that they have like little seating areas and it's like very student centered. And when I look at our, our campuses, I'm like, where do the kids who maybe don't play a sport? Where do they sit down and read a book? Where do they gather with friends? So that's just, I mean, that may be a long-term thing, but just like what you're thinking about it. Executive functioning, I've heard from high school, this is a struggle. Even dealing with my own staff that just graduated college, they don't know how to take notes. And so making sure that our students. But what if you don't have internet connection? So just making sure, I know.
It's not what chat GPT is.
Well, I use AI, but I know sometimes my connection isn't strong. But just making sure executive functioning and all that, like it's a real struggle for me right now. And I am so flustered with it. And so I, I see it all the time talking to other parents like, oh my God, these kids. And I'm like, they have computers, they don't have to do as much. And then the last thing was just the, I know I feel like I have a lot, but I just wanna make sure that I agree with you. Elective opportunities, I think that is so important. I know we talked about music and the drop off from black students from, black and brown students from band. So making sure that, you know, there are other things. So I'd be interested to know like what those, like what ideas you guys have and just how parents and families in general could just like kind of contribute to that.
Thank you.
Any thoughts or responses from the team to what Shree has, has shared?
I know for a couple of the things you mentioned, especially like the electives, those are like widely heard through the data. And things that we plan that also too, just so everyone is aware of being transparent, like for next year, we may not have like a ton of new offerings, but that is something that we hope to start developing next year to then have offerings even further down the road. So while we gathered a lot of data and we have a lot of asks, like you're saying, right? And we're also making sure that we do implementation in a way that is feasible, right? And that we don't overshoot and then not do things well because implementation is everything, right? To the success. So thinking about those small chunks that we can take on from everything that we've learned. What is it next year is maybe how do we line what we're offering, right? And how, like how often and how long, right? And then let's look at how we can expand choice. And then let's look at, right? So I think you are hitting on a lot of the things that we learned from listening to the community. And then please know that if you don't see it next year or in February, right? That doesn't mean that it's a no, right? It's just a not yet so that we can do things the right way and make sure that we make that incremental change so that it's long lasting.
I'd also like adding to that, I think in our components, the access, how do we ensure that there's access for black and brown students and have ways that is scheduled, we can get anywhere, you know, same. And that's very intentional as we design this, how flows things. And that's something that might not be perfect, as you know, as we say. But sometime we'll be able to, to open and start working towards that. So that's something definitely that's part in our, in our questions, in our drivers about student center, student access and equity policy calls for it. So it's having it, but also it's also the work in the how, how to, to, to open it. So I think that's one of the pieces as well as we are working and defining the, the what. And then also we're gonna be going through the how, through, through the process.
I think what your question makes me think about too is something about, and I'm making a note, that we need to plan for the continuous improvement so that it's not like, oh, this is our first big change. But over time, and like you're saying, like, we might need to also say, look, these are things that are on our radars. How can we have more choice and flexibility with the electives? Might not get to that in year one, but we have to name that we heard that. And then what's our plan to keep getting feedback and keep getting better? And that might be something we, we can think about building into our system. So appreciate that.
Shree, I was just gonna add, as a parent of a now sixth grader, I actually think that both of the middle schools did a really great job of onboarding us as parents. I, I think the problem, I guess, or an area of improvement is increasing parent engagement, especially our diverse parents. Because we had a series of emails that came out from our, you know, incoming sixth graders, like step one, email one, email two. And it was like what to expect, when to come in. And they had like parent information night in the spring that they hosted. They did tours, they had Power School and people who are ready to help you set it up and look through what you can do with the scheduling. They even go to each of the elementary schools. So like April came to our feeder elementary school. So it was a smaller group that you could chat with her about. But I will say that we were, there were very few parent attendees.
I would also just push back on that a little bit and that people learn in different ways. So a lot of times I'm in the line, the long line at Pete's and I say email and I'm like, I'm gonna go back to that. And then before I know, like I missed a very big deadline recently. And I was like, I missed it, sorry, to my kid. I was like, sorry, I missed this. So I think just like having more. And then we always know, like you gotta tell somebody something so many times. And I know it's frustrating because I deal with it with my staff, like I told you that like two days ago. But just like those reinforcements, because it is a lot. And speaking as someone who has three middle schoolers, we're all over the place. So I think if someone, if, if they were just like, you didn't catch this, here's a video, you know, right? So I could go back and watch that on demand. Or we're gonna have a makeup session or whatever that looks like. Like I'm looking at the invitation to go to the high school and I'm like, how many parents like might not be able to make that? Will there be other opportunities? So not to say that you didn't, and I think you did a good job. And also, I think also the behavior piece of it. Hearing parents say, I told them to go fight somebody, really, I'm, I'm just sitting there like, what? So I think from that perspective, making sure that we're engaging and even checking each other, right? So if, just making up something, if Nancy's like, yeah, and I told her to go, you know, steal that kid's lunch money or whatever. The other parents are like clear on what the expectation is and how do we de-escalate things? Middle school's a tricky time, so. Um, middle schools are tricky times, so I think more so the behavior, because even my kids are like, well, that hatch was so little, and it was like just us, but now they're, and for some reason, they're afraid of eighth graders. Um, and I'm like, so I think uh for me, it's the the behavior, because our kids see that. Uh, and the more that we can all be aligned, like, these are the expectations, if you don't do this, this, these are the consequences. Because we all get those parents who's like, I didn't know, so.
I, just to add to Sheree.
I was just gonna say, just a a quick point on that one is just to add in, um, that much as you're iterating out with the, what you're doing with the electives, what you're doing with classes, I will say that I feel like the parent experience has already, step by step, gotten a lot better. But it's like, what is that next evolution in how you're gonna engage the parents?
I hear you guys talking about things like parent universities and things like that, that, yes.
Might actually be.
And I know for me, it's like in my head.
It's like a little like parent therapy too, like, I feel like we identify, your kid is going to kindergarten. That's an emotional time, right? Then you're you're an empty nester, your kid's going to high school. I don't know if we really talk about the fact that you get to middle school and you are in a close school community where you like saw the other parents, you might not meet your friends, your kid's friends' parents. Like, you might literally never meet them unless you see them at a a sport or a robotics event. You might never meet the other kid's parents. You won't, not likely to see a teacher, because there's no playground, there's no standing outside and talking to the teachers in advance. You might not, um, your kid might be less enthusiastic about everything, right? Like, so I, I mean, it might be worth it to kind of have the conversation, I, that like middle school and our middle schools aren't like terrible places, your kid's different, you're different, the relationship's different. We might not talk about it, like, not to get all corny, but we might not talk about it in the same way we talk about when your kid goes to high school, college, or kindergarten. Like, we don't really, like, there's a difference in the relationship at sixth grade. And we might not be actually kind of just commiserating as parents in that change, or like talking about that change quite as much, like, even no matter how many times you learn about power school and Canvas, your kid might not talk to you for like, in the same way that they used, they used to come home and tell you about their whole day, they might not do that, right? Hey, Mike.
Yeah, this is really important, um, what you're both sharing, and I think we need to think about it and then and think about how it can form, like, um, the things that you named are true, that things change when you go to middle school, but how much of that do we accept? And how much do we want to design differently? So is it, it is, it is, that is what happens, but is it what has to happen? And it isn't. If we want a different experience for our families and for our students, we can make that happen. I don't argue with you.
Some of it's independence, I'm not saying all of it's negative, it's not all negative, it's just unknown, right?
Yeah, it's unknown.
There's something about independence, and they're gonna have their own friends, and they're gonna come, go, come and go as they want.
That's right, and and just, yeah, coming together maybe differently as a parent community too. Um, I guess I I think this idea, now that we have middle school connections, how might we have like one of those nights be a middle school parent connection? You know, so that evening when you, before you pick up your child, maybe there is some kind of uh program around uh, you know, what to expect, and it doesn't even have to be the school district telling you, it's parents talking to each other. So we can use our superpowers as a school district, not necessarily to always have the answers, but to organize parents to like, you know, talk about these things. I also think about like the anxieties parents have and the real ones, like, there are parents who worry about how their child is going to connect with other children. We want to know that, and we can use our superpowers behind the scenes to work with our parents to anticipate those things, you know? So I think there's a, something we can keep thinking about in what you're sharing, kind of the parent perspective and how to maybe that, make that the two-point-O version of our middle school connections as we think about it.
I think it was, okay. I was gonna say, it seems really silly, but one of the most like impactful movies for me in life was uh Inside Out. And um, I think the part two, um, I was like literally falling in the theater with, because I made my kids go see it with me. But it was a constant reminder to me, like, they're going through a really difficult time. The puberty monster right now, I got three middle schoolers, is kicking my butt all up and down the stairs, the house everywhere. But I think that's a good reminder to us, like, they're going through so much with emotions. So I think for teachers even, like, my daughter was like, she said I was gonna add to, I was gonna add to, and I'm like, maybe you didn't mean to, but maybe it was interpreted that, so like, those type of conversations that even with other kids, like, they're going through a lot. And so I think for us to always remind ourselves, like, this is a hard time for them. And as much as parents can be aware, like, they're gonna step up the stairs, they're gonna suck their teeth, slam doors. Don't take it personal, they're gonna have crushes, they're gonna, like, all the things that are happening is very new for us, and so how do we continue to support you as a staff and educators, right? Because I want you to call me, I want you to say, she was being rude, so I could be like, something's up, let me go talk to her. But then how do we like work together, right? And I tell any uh teachers, have my kids, I always say, we're partners, you're the expert, you went to school for this. I value that. I want to partner with you, so if I know something's going on at home, I want to be able to say, yep, it's because our watch was broke for a whole week. And if something's going on, I want you to be able to say, she's been kind of like quiet, that's not really her. So that's why I think like bringing the the families in is so important, and so I just want to see, I would love to see that more explicitly, um, so that we don't miss those kids who fall through the cracks. Um, I mean, my, my daughter was telling me about a student in one of her classes who has been talking about self-harm, and I'm like, that's a lot for you. And I was like, I don't have a last name, what do I do? So I think those are kind of things that we as parents are like, I don't know what to do, so.
Um, I just had a couple of other things, thank you guys for the presentation. Um, I really appreciate the creativity around having um variety in schedules so that we can have core subjects. Every day, we had teachers come in and tell us that they really think, like, would like to see more math in E L A, so um, I, you know, and I think parents probably feel the same way. Um, I also appreciate that um we're talking about the length of of school, but we're not, it's, I I guess I just appreciate that we're not saying, okay, so it's not block schedules, but we're gonna go right back to this. And we're gonna, right, so it, that there's kind of an acknowledgement that maybe you don't have to have even class at times, and you don't have to have, it doesn't have to be the same every day, so uh, I think our kids can handle it, like, I really do, I think there's always like, are the kids gonna get confused? And is that gonna be very stressful? But I do think they can handle it, and I think that that, based on some of the feedback we've heard, I think it's um, I think it's a really interesting thing to be talking about and working with. Um, I was curious, um, I thought that one thing that kind of struck me was that seems like the data said that everyone wants like longer lunch periods. I didn't see more structured lunch periods, but then when it came to the response, we want to structure them. And I was reading, people want more social time kind of freedom in lunch and longer. And I was curious about how the word structured ended up kind of in that, do you know what I mean? I don't know if you noticed. Well, no, if, like, the the families say they want longer lunch, or other kids say they want longer lunch. And there was, like, at the top on the eyeball, kids want longer lunch, and the answer is, let's have um, more structured lunch. And I was just curious, the word structure ended up at the lightbulb, but the eyeball just says longer and um, social active, so.
But the kids are necessarily saying they want longer, the the, like, I hear this from my middle school, they want more time to eat, which is not the same thing as longer lunch. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, yes, and I agree with that.
Like, I'm building a rally so that like we can get to, right?
I was thinking more about like this, and I like the idea of like the loungy spaces.
Me too, yeah.
And lunch, like, I li- I I like it either way, I just was curious, because the word structure seemed to make it into the lightbulb.
I think the structure, I mean, many things, it's not necessarily like a structure where you're sitting down or moving, actually, it could be a structure where the spaces, uh, even the way that we are even uh coordinating in like lunch and social time, because it's not only lunch, it's also a social time that goes with that. And then also the opportunity for have access to other uh needs for students where they want to go to the library to read a book, or that opportunity to get like tutoring at that time. Uh, also, one of the very interesting, like, in one of the conversations that we had with some of our students and some of our families, even like, what about opportunity for them to get together in a club, like, during the time? Really get to know each other that way, again, meaningful, the structure, meaning like supportive structure that way. And not necessarily like restricted structure.
So related to structure, I apologize, but I meant to put this in earlier. Um, this is also an opportunity, we heard some pain points earlier about acceleration with math, when you're going fifth to sixth. And then also eighth to ninth, those are kind of some pain points in there. So one thing to make sure you're considering in there is, how can we smooth those over so that, you know, the easy way isn't that you have to give up any morning activities? Or, you know, kind of finagle it yourself in the afternoon for for the eighth to ninth. And then for fifth to sixth, they're not missing, you know, sections of things that they would really like to be there for. So just something to take into account when you're looking at the schedule.
Thank you.
I had one quick plug for one, we're talking about like spaces for our kids that we're also plugging into the master facilities plan, but those conversations are being thoughtfully. Because, you know, I'd love to talk about the Dickensian like mud lot that the kids at Julian play in the corner there and like how we address that.
How we expand it.
Make it funnier.
More kids.
Yeah, there you go.
I have a question about Julian. I know we're two presentations. Um, so the the premise, and I'm not an educator, so I can't say that there's data behind, I haven't seen the data. Is that if kids have a greater sense of belonging, that that's gonna improve their behaviors, it's gonna improve role following, and that they are um, more invested and more engaged. So I've seen your improvements um along those lines, particularly about sense of belonging. So thus far, how has that panned out in terms of behaviors that you're seeing among students?
Sure. All right, um, just looking at the team to see if anyone else wants to talk. Um, but I would say that um, in general, we have had a lot of reports of um, lower-level behaviors, and when you look at our Swiss data now, that we have, that we've been able to implement, um, you do see a decrease in those higher-level behaviors. So when we're looking at our standbook, our handbook, and we see like level one, two, three, four, five behaviors, um, you know, there has been a dramatic decrease um in some of those level three and level four behaviors that we saw when I first, the students walked in almost the first day. Um, at least on our on our campus, so um, that has been really wonderful to see, you know? Because that's not what we want to spend our time addressing, and we don't want kids to be in positions where they feel they have to act that way, right? Um, so I think that, you know, it's because of our teams being in place, working with our student success coaches and social workers who are really um tirelessly working to support students who are struggling. Um, and connecting with families, um, having them in for, to build those connections. Um, you know, parent meetings and and phone calls and emails and all of those things. Um, really establishing those strong connections, as well as putting in um check-in check-outs with teachers that you know, one of the things that we started this year, um, right at the beginning, was that if a student did for some reason have to have a suspension, right? Um, had one of those larger level um uh behaviors that required um some time to reteach. That that in-school suspension is a time where they meet with a social worker or a student success coach, and they actually create a plan of support. And part of that plan of support is that for at least ten days, they connect with one of their core teachers um, every single day to talk about like, how are you doing? Are there any concerns that you're having? Are students bothering you? Are you, are there questions that you have? All of those sorts of things to get them connected, um, so that we try to reduce recidivism, right? Um, so just, this is those structures that I'm talking about, where we've really aligned um, those practices and thought through these restorative practices. Um, those student success coaches and social workers and our A Ps and myself are also, as those check-ins are happening, trying to see like, when can we bring those kids who may have had an issue back to the table to talk through it and restore? Um, and 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 reduce the harm that they may have felt. Um, so all of those pieces are in there, right? Um, and and so that has been a large shift in in our work as a, that support, I call it our student support team, where we have our SWANs meeting, so, social workers, administrators, nurse, and student success coach. Um, so our SWANs team gets together um to talk about those kids on the behavior data. Um, while our teachers are talking um more on the academic side too.
And I think too, like, there's been a big pivot in relationship building, so that has been something a lot of students have come to Ms. Dotson and myself and said, like, I just appreciate that you're listening and asking like what's happening and having conversations. Seeing a lot of students just stopping by to say like, hey, I heard this was going on. Is this something you could support with? So I feel like we're building that trust of kids talking to adults and seeking out support, um, whether for themselves or for a friend. Um, we still have work to do, but I think, you know, I I think, you know, that's any school you go to, right? Like, you're, there's always going to be work to do, but it means a lot to see that the kids, you know, I got the same group of like sixth graders who always come and check in and just even like a willingness of kids to ask like, hey, can you support me in a conversation with a teacher? That they're seeing, we're not just like an administrative team, like, we're here to really do the work alongside you and help you and support you. Um, I think we've seen, you know, uh, as well, like, the staff participating in those restorative conversations. We're really implementing for minor things that the teachers are working with the students as a means to like build relationships and do some reteaching. Uh, so that it feels more collective and cohesive versus just things handled in isolation. Um, I think that that's all been really important in in moving, you know, the culture and really helping to meet students where they're at, but also providing tools, right? To to help them either have a voice or to learn, you know, how can we go about this in a different way?
That I can see as well, like, moving from that reactive, that proactive, like preventive work, and that's, as I shared, like, a lot of, yeah, working together, because we're all all this together. So really coming together, restoring what's working, what's not working, finding out strategies, and really learning from each other and really applying those. With that, as well as uh, as we see our system, how we, your system become more clear and really supportive to our students and families. So I think that's some of the growth that we have seen throughout, but in the end, we're still going to keep moving forward together.
Thank you.
Can I just put also a plug like our street data? Our hallways are so much kinder this year. And I think we have students who are interacting with each other just in really a- appro- adolescent appropriate ways, right? So that that doesn't always look like an adult walking through a hall, right? But at the same time, um, just positive words, I I just want to echo what Adrian is saying about students feeling comfortable coming to adults for themselves, but also for their peers. So things that you're hearing from your child at home that is alarming, like, what do I do? We're hearing, kids hear it first, right? They're gonna, they're gonna know more than we know as the adults, and I feel like they are um approaching us for help more often. Um, I'm on crutches, I can't tell you how many kids are holding doors, grabbing my bag, right? Like, whatever, you know, the things that that we are so comfortable seeing in our elementary schools, because they're sweet and they're cute and they're helpful. And then they become adolescents and we're a little bit alarmed when they're like, close the door, right? Like, bigger bodies, right? But they're still such good hearts, and I feel like we're creating a space where they feel comfortable expressing that good heart still, which is a really lovely shift.
Thank you all. I will just say, as a Julian parent, I've been really happy with your leadership, I think lots of folks are. It just seems like we're really headed in a good direction and really grateful for just how thoughtful and deliberate you guys are being. And just the distributive leadership aspect of it is really nice, so I think about kind of the conversations we were having last spring about how people were feeling about the middle schools and the conversation we just had tonight, and it just feels really good, so. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, okay, seven point three, District Number Seven, Commitment to Math Excellence.
Yep, so we have coming up, though, I don't know where you're going, Louise, um, at Round Rivers, yep. And so we have uh Emily Prehan coming up, along with Patrick Robinson, and Louise is staying up, so um, this is our commitment to math excellence. All right, I know you've got the control in there. All right, I know you've got the control over there, so.
Well, with that, we just want to bring forward about the importance of algebra. As our algebra, we know it's a foundation for all math. Well, and it's some of the pieces that we have actually, statements that actually occur and also we validate to this work. Also, we understand that actually how important this math is the foundation. The more successful a student can be. And also about the importance of taking your time when you're learning these foundational skills. In advanced math, we'll only be available, but also a worthwhile experience as you increase the students' for love for math. In the early days, we want students to really enjoy what they're doing and really go into that learning experience where we can maximize their outcomes.
All right, we're just going to go back and level set a little bit because I think there's been just some confusion in general around our math programs and all of that. So pre-2017, if you have been here, had kids here long enough, you know that when your second grader was in class, they took the COGAT. That COGAT score is a standardized assessment that was given. Based on that score and nothing else, we then deemed whether a student was accelerated in math and reading or not. And back then, we called it walk-up reading. And so that was the only score we used at that time. So there were a lot of students making it through this process based on that one score. Then in 2019, the equity policy was implemented. And under that equity policy, we decided that the community came together with district administration and teachers and decided that it was a better approach, research shows, or enrichment for all. So then that was developed under that. And that kind of, we got rid of giving the COGAT in second grade. And so it stopped this mass acceleration process in second grade. Also, in 2019, the state came out and said, hey, we have a new state mandated acceleration process around the same time. So that all happened at the same time. However, as a district, we thought, in 2020, right after that state mandate came out, what really is important isn't one test score. What's really important is how are students understanding and experiencing the standards? The standards in their grade level, the standards in grade levels in which to challenge. And that's not just, if we think back to the Julian and we think about the Sonny, that's not just being able to recall it, that's really being able to dive deep into it, to experience those standards, not just do more of, but really go deeper. And so now, what students do, instead of going from just one score into an accelerated, we have students that now go up. We're assessing those learning standards for math, and then we're determining the right math course for them based on that.
And I think it's also important to acknowledge some of the other themes, some of the other key math initiatives that was also taking place in D97 before we kind of jumped into some of the other math courses that we also have to offer. And so in addition to the walk-up math and reading that was taking place based on the second grade COGAT scores, we also offered bridge and review courses to rising sixth and eighth grade students for about two to, 2.5 weeks to three weeks during the summer only. And then in 2017, our gifted, talented, and information, our GTD teachers came together and formed a committee to really kind of talk about some of the inequities that we had within our, at that time, acceleration process. And we call it our enrichment for all. And at that time, they developed, I believe, they started to kind of phase out the walk-up and the walk-up reading and math in the elementary. And they began to what we call enrichment for all in which, instead of pulling students out, we started kind of phasing in a push-in model in which students, well, all students began to have exposure to enrichment opportunities in kindergarten on up in fifth grade. And then our GTD teachers, we had a title change, and they became our enrichment specialists. Then in 2019, as Emily just said, we implemented our equity policy. And then at the same time, the state acceleration law was enacted. And then we, in D97, we established our acceleration practices. And then we continue to kind of push in or do our push-in accelerate, our enrichment for all with, through our enrichment specialists and kind of phase out the complete walk-up reading and math.
I think, can I add something?
Yes.
I think it's also important to recognize that one of the reasons that that change happened in 2017 and 2019 in that two-year span was because what we were seeing was a huge discrepancy in students that were qualifying for our walk-up program.
Yes.
It was primarily white, it was primarily students that have paid lunch status, and it was primarily male.
Thank you for pointing that out. And then in 2020, we revamped the summer math enrichment program for 2021. And then in 2021, we revised the bridge and end-of-course exam. And then in 2022, we added the trimester three program in addition to the summer program. And then we also updated the math criteria. And then in 2023, we eliminated the sixth grade math placement exam. And then in 2024, we also implemented the appeals process for bridge end-of-the-course exam and then expanded the math criteria to include our standard error measurements. And we just really wanted to kind of point these things out to kind of give some background information as we begin to talk about some of the current practices and what we are planning on moving forward.
Can I ask one question? Do you mind if I ask one during the, so I have had children and been on the board for this entire time. I don't remember the discussion about eliminating the sixth grade math. Why did you eliminate that math placement?
Great question. So this was before my time in this, but I do know the answer to this. So I might not be able to go into detail. So when they, every year, we do a reflection after all of our programs and talk about, look at the data, how many students passed through each pathway. And I think over the years, when they were looking at the pathway, and when we had three, we had the bridge course, we had the math pathway, and we had the math placement pathway in fifth grade, we weren't, the numbers, we were getting very, very few students who are passing through that placement that were passing through other ones. And it wasn't, and it was taking time away from instruction because it was given during the school day in fifth grade. So it was taking a lot of time away from instruction. And so they, we didn't have, I think that the number, I couldn't even give you the actual number, but the number of students that passed through that pathway and not the others were very, it was very rare.
That was my understanding.
Thank you.
So as we think about the, those components, those key components to approach the standard-based instruction in D97, and we are, we're very committed to the math excellence. And when we say a math excellence and the commitment is to really give students that access to what is appropriate, a developmental appropriate math courses for them, and then also through the journey, through the journey here with us. We're also highly committed in providing that highly quality standard-based instruction in their classrooms, where really, as you saw in the logic models, really invested into brewing that tier-one practice in the classrooms. And you can even see as part of the goals as well. That's part of our focus, and we're going to continue moving forward. And we're also, we're very committed as well to listening and getting feedback from all stakeholders continuing evolving our programs. I think that, as you saw through that continuum of what Patrick shared, this really is intended to really continue evolving our program to better our students and our community. So the feedback from our family is very important because we do listen and we do actually take that in consideration as we look at the review of programs. We are also very committed to prepare our students for high school and beyond. So as, with that, we're engaging with the high schools. We have like a regular meetings with them. And O M L is regular with staff. I'm also networking with superintends from the mean school. And we're really continuing to, for the high school as well. And we are really committed to really continue making this bridge from that. And then one of the most important ones is also very committed as well to listen to our students. We want to make sure as we continue moving forward that we bring the students' voices through this process because it's very important for them to really share with us and be part of helping the decision, impact their journey. So part of the appeal process reflects that. And then also, as we are actually contacting needs of our students, we are very committed and taking the time to really get to know our students, our processes.
All right, so as you can tell, we kind of organize this question, answer, question, answer. So the next question is what research and our stakeholder feedback is guiding our approach? So these are the things that we've heard over the years. We have heard from our own staff, our math department has shared that just students' performance and engagement, like, they need to be experiencing math, not just skipping over it. We have family concerns about the progress made in some of the advanced courses. We've heard from families, especially in our prior model where they were being, they were accelerated in second grade, they double-accelerated from three weeks in the summer. Families have said, if I knew that my kid was double-accelerated, then I wouldn't have done this. Like, this is, they go to the high school and they're not prepared. And then O P R F has shared their own concerns with us that our double-accelerated students are missing foundational skills that really make the, when they get up into that AP pre-calc, AP calc, and beyond that, trig, stat, that they're missing some of those foundational skills. And that our D97 students are the ones that are struggling in their classrooms. Our D97 students that aren't appropriately age-placed are struggling in their classrooms. We also have research to back that up. There's a lot of research out there talking about this rush to calculus, this double acceleration, this idea of students not, that they're rushing through to get to the end. And what it's telling us is, is that when students are rushing through and not doing it for the love of math, for the joy of math, not really learning all of those foundational skills, that when they get to the end, they're actually not our students that are going into STEM fields. They're our students that abandoned mathematics after high school, after college because their experience was not one of love and engagement. Their experience was a sprint, not a journey. So knowing all of that, I think that there's also been a lot of confusion around the difference between our state-mandated acceleration process and our access to algebra program here in D97. So we do have two different pathways, and both of these pathways have different purposes. I will be the first to acknowledge that the communication around this has been very unclear at times. Our own staff sometimes is unclear about the difference between the programs. Our families have been, that is, we need to evolve and do better. And I feel like that has been a giant push this year to change the language, to change how we communicate, to be more transparent. However, that being said, the purpose has never changed. The purpose has always remained the same. The purpose for access to algebra, which was formerly called math enrichment, the purpose has always been to supply students with access to algebra or access to integrated math one before they go to high school. The purpose for acceleration has always been to accelerate past a grade level of standards. And so those remain the same. I also want to say, as just like a clarifier, that we are calling it access to algebra. I know Nancy and I talked about this at West Board meeting because it sounds nice, it's a nice alliteration, it rolls off the tongue nicely. But it is technically access to integrated math. We have our family night tomorrow night. We talk about what an integrated math program is, so I won't go into detail about it now. But it is part algebra, the algebra concepts are there, but it is a spiraled curriculum, a spiraled course.
I just don't want to give geometry short trip.
Yes.
Who doesn't love geometry?
Exactly. But, so that is the reason for the name, although it is, it is access to integrated math.
The meeting tomorrow, just because you just mentioned it, what time is it? Is it virtual, so people that are?
It is not virtual, it's in person, at six to seven, at Brooks in the Commons. We will be putting the deck that we've created online afterwards so that families can have access to that who can't make it. And so hopefully.
And what is the registration date?
The registration date for the state-mandated acceleration, the window opens March 1st. And then the registration date for access to algebra opens January 27. And it's truly, and I figured I'd give you the ending dates of those.
That's okay. I just want to tell those listening, then they hear those dates.
Yes. So they're both coming up, one sooner than the other. So our state-mandated acceleration process is where you are accelerating past your age-appropriate grade level in any subject. And this is for any student. Any student can go through this as many times as they want. A student can sign themselves up, a teacher can sign a student up, a parent can sign a student up. So I will say, I mean in full transparency, it is largely parent-run. But we do have teachers recommend, we do have students self-recommend or self-apply. We do need parent consent, so we do have the parents fill out the application in the end. But we do have both teachers and students that also drive the bus. But it is fairly run by parents. And again, the, oh, there, look, March 1st to April 25th is the window in which students can apply for whole grade or single subjects. Both of these are applied, are for the statement process. And then the other program that we run is an access program, and this is access to algebra, integrated math one. And this is to, for students who are not currently on the track to receive algebra before they go to high school, the opportunity to do so. Again, this pathway was really born out of our equity policy to make sure that it wasn't just largely white, male students with a paid lunch status. This is only available to students in fifth and sixth grade, so that's another difference from the state-mandated program. The state-mandated program is any grade level. And it's also only for math. Again, different from the state-mandated process because the state-mandated process is every single subject.
So this is fifth to seventh, you just said fifth to sixth?
I meant fifth to seventh.
No problem.
Fifth to seventh, this is correct. And then there's two different pathways in which they can go. They can go through the bridge pathway, which is taking a course during third trimester and the summer, and then passing that end-of-course exam with an 80% or higher. Or they can sign up to take a spring math test and meet their grade level criteria, it's different for each grade level. So again, this was formerly math enrichment. So what is the math course sequence from a sixth grader to go from sixth to ninth grade in D97? So currently, a sixth grader coming in that has no acceleration, that's not been through, been through an access-to-algebra pathway, will start in math six. So math six, seventh, and eighth would be that trajectory. We also have integrated math one, which was formerly known as algebra. This is only new in the last two years. And then after that is integrated math two. It was formerly known as geometry here in D97. It is now, we've now aligned with O P R F, so it's integrated math two. And that course now is only, is available at the high school now. So we work closely with the high school and have students go over there. The reason for that change is again, because when we changed to, from doing second grade COGAT scores and three weeks over the summer only to our new process, both for access to algebra and our state-mandated process, our numbers did decrease. We didn't have the numbers to have that course run here when we could work, partner with the high school. We've partnered with the high school for years around acceleration, and it's always been a really positive experience for students and families. It's a little rough at first because I think there's a lot of feelings and a lot of emotions and making sure everything gets set up. But I would say at the end, I generally hear fairly good feedback. Not even fairly good, I hear really good feedback from families and staff. And then we also just want to know that we're bulking up our website, so it's coming soon. So we're slowly but surely working on our website, making sure that everything there is up to date with all of the changes that have been happening. So how can an eighth-grade student with different middle school math courses have, can, or how can an eighth-grade student with different middle school math courses access AP calc when they go to high school? And can a student who has not participated in any of the state-mandated acceleration process in middle school still take pre-calc in high school? The answer is yes. All students, any student, regardless of their math course, eighth grade, has access to pre-calc or AP calc.
Yeah, I was just.
I'm sorry, did I say pre-calc?
You were.
You guys, this nine o'clock time is not my favorite. Okay, they all have access to AP calculus. I want to make sure I was clear on that, and I'm going to show you how. So if you have an eighth-grade student in math eight, which I currently do, an eighth-grade student in math eight, next year, when she goes, she will take math one at the high school, which is the same as our integrated math one here in District 97. If she does well, she's feeling really good about it, she can take an intensive summer math two course. Pass that, then her sophomore. Pass that, then her sophomore year she'd take Math 3, her junior year she'd take AP pre-calc, and her senior year she would be in AP calc. So you do not need to go through access to algebra, nor do you need to go through the state mandated process to still be able to get to AP calculus yet.
Can I ask a question, Emily?
Absolutely.
Can you take the intensive summer math this summer going into your ninth grade year?
No, because integrated Math 1 is a prerequisite at the high school. So they, you must take that course to go into math.
And they don't offer IM 1 in summer?
In the summer.
Not to my knowledge, but I can't speak too much on that, because that's an OPRF thing. So I would, I would need to reach out to the high school to verify that.
I don't think they do either.
I don't, yeah, I don't.
I'm just wondering, having.
Yeah, I don't want to say that with too much of a focus.
My IM 2 is, I want to say an easier curriculum, but I'm wondering if there's like a purposeful selection of IM 2 being a summer course. I mean, I have an undergrad who's really interested in like jumping, jumping of math, and I've been curious if she can do that over this summer. So this is kind of interesting. Also, when you, when we say intensive summer math, is it just summer school math? Or is this a separate thing? Because I, I mean, when they register, a lot of kids take summer school at the high school, and a lot of kids take math. Is this some, it says intensive, and usually, does that mean it's different than regular summer school math?
I don't know that answer for sure, but I do know that you have to, like, you have to get permission from the math department to go ahead and sign up for that. So it's not open to everybody. You have to be doing well in integrated Math 1 to be able to go ahead and do that. But I don't know how, I don't know how it runs. These are all good questions, and I can reach out to OPRF, but they are all led and ran by OPRF. So profile B, we have students in integrated Math 1. We have about a third of our eighth graders that are in integrated Math 1. They either got in through access to algebra or through an accelerated, the state mandated acceleration process. So then you can see that they've already done something extra to get into integrated Math 1. So here is their pathway, their freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year, to take them all the way up to AP calculus. And then our third profile of a student, who, we have a very few of students this year, but students who are already taking integrated Math 2 or Math 2 at OPRF, then this is their trajectory. And so you'll see that by their junior year, they'll be taking AP calc, which means that their senior year, they're taking a class beyond math.
Geometry, statistics, something.
Math-related, because they'll still do four years of math.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
I feel like something must have changed, because the current sophomores didn't have to be, we just started integrated Math 2, right? Like, being available. When, was integrated Math 2 available at the middle school last year, right?
No, integrated 2 has never, integrated Math 2 has never been available here in D97. Geometry was, though.
Okay, so the kids that are now sophomores that are in pre-calculus that never took Math 2 here, took geometry?
Yes.
Got it. And that path is no longer available?
That path is no longer available. So OPRF changed their math pathway, going from algebra, geometry. Statistical thinking, I think it was, I don't know for sure, yeah. What that math used to be. But then, so they, they changed it, so we aligned with them so that our students would be ready, because the majority of our student body goes on to OPRF.
I think from what I understand, integrated Math 1 and 2 is like algebra, geometry, and something to do with like SAT testing or something. They're trying to get kids enough exposure to higher level algebra, I think. So they're comboing it, which is similar to like our science, where they're doing like.
I mean, so I have a lot of familiarity with that. So part of it was that, but part of it is also just algebra and geometry were kind of, not arbitrarily separated, but they were separated in a way that, you know, if you have a brain that is getting algebra, but geometry is a little harder, you're kind of stuck with one year where everything is harder. Whereas when you put them together, the algebra can explain the geometry, or the geometry can explain the algebra, and they just go together a little bit more nicely. And it helps students kind of bump up a little bit more easily.
Well, the observation I have, though, is that having a kid in high school is like, never had to do any of the bridge classes and ended up in pre-calc sophomore year, which I've tried, right, like very easily, like very seamlessly, without any break. And I'm not saying, and they would do no acceleration, just regular going to school. No summers, no trimester three, no acceleration, no extra tests. And they were on that course, but I think it's because the high school changed it, not because, right? So that's what I was hearing, right? Like, it used to be, I think one of the things that probably might be making some parents uncomfortable is if you have an older kid who just seamlessly went to middle school, got to high school, they're going to take calculus in junior year, and talking about whether or not they even take math in senior year, instead of one of those awesome electives they have over there. Do you know what I mean? And you've got then, now a whole set of kids that have to go to school in the summer and take a bridge class and figure out if they have to, like, how they get to the same place, especially with the shift in the college conversation about everyone, all of the colleges and trying to, emphasizing the need for calculus in high school, right? So I think there's a, it used to be, like, we had to do nothing. We just showed, our kids just showed up, ended up on the right, the path to, I don't know, college. And now it feels like your kid has to sign up for all this extra stuff. They have to go to math all year in sixth or seventh grade, and then take another math class. That's frankly, a little inconvenient from a scheduling standpoint, right? And so, and that just wasn't the reality for parents that have older children now.
But they weren't matriculating to calculus, that was part of the problem. If they, if they did nothing and matriculated, they didn't end up in calculus. And it was affecting their abilities.
No, they did, they did.
They did not.
Not all of them, but a lot of them did. We didn't, we had math, it was six, seven, seven, eight, eight, nine. And our kids were just going to calculus without a parent, you didn't have to do a thing. You had to knock.
Yes, a meeting. So just to transition that from what Holly said, I think the question back to you all is, I think that that goes back to the not, the kids dropping out and not being prepared, is that?
That's exactly right. And that was, so that was the feedback that we were getting, not only from our own math department, but from OPRF's math department, saying, hey, these kids aren't ready. And we realized it was because some of these kids are moving through a system without really diving deep into these standards and making sure, experiencing those math concepts and those standards, and they weren't ready.
Do you think we'll ever get to a place where you just go to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and still access this without having that bridge class, the necessary bridge class? Do you know what I mean? Is there another, I don't know, like, and I know you guys are very much in touch with kind of other middle school pathways, but where, and when I say another bridge class, just recognizing the difficulties we always talk about, about access and making sure of the right, like, every kid had, able to sign up for, attend the meeting tomorrow, and attend a trimester three plus in a summer. As opposed to frankly, during the school year, being able to have a math class that teaches the standards in all the ways, just regular class, just, just go to school for three years. Don't have to sign up for anything extra, you don't have to come after school or whatever. Is that a way to, in the future, or are we done with that?
I think that we're close to done with that, but I never say never. You never close the book on something who knows where we'll, where we'll end up. I would say that right now, if, you know, there are pathways for students to get there, but they do include something outside of that, because what we're seeing is that we need to make sure, like, it's our academic responsibility to make sure students are prepared for that. Because if they're not, then we're setting them up for academic failure in the future.
Right, but is there a curriculum that's out there that prepares them in the regular three school years? As opposed to three plus? I saw the plus on there, that's what I wanted.
No, no, I hear what you're saying, and potentially, you know, as we, as, and that's a good thing for us to always keep in mind, as we're doing curriculum reviews and as we're looking at it. But right now, that's not how our standards align, because it's not really a curriculum that gets us there. It's our state standards that get us there. Our curriculum just helps guide some of those activities and experiences within the standards. And so currently, right now, regardless of any curriculum that's out there.
There's too many standards to teach your three straight years.
Our standards are, like, we need to make sure students are ready and solid in those standards.
And I would suggest add on the enrichment for all. The idea behind that is just making sure that all of our students do have the opportunity to have those opportunities within the day for the enrichment opportunities, starting in kindergarten with math. And so that's the whole idea of having the enrichment specialist push in during the day for the 30 minutes, and then that time increases as the students go up in grade and have those opportunities.
But then enrichment isn't focused on math, I mean, there are.
It is math, so it's math. So for, so you have it for math, and then you have it for ELA.
Okay, I thought the enrichment had, I don't know, a group project element, right, like a.
It's critical thinking.
It's critical thinking skills, but it applies across the continuum.
Yeah, and then there is also a focus on math with those enrichment specialists.
And so what should parents, students do if their learning is not rigorous enough? And I think this is a question we get a lot. And so one of the things we wanted to kind of create is just kind of like a flow chart for our families, just so that we're making sure we're creating a direct communication for our students, families, and our staff. And the goal is to really just make sure that we create this flow chart to ensure that questions and concerns are quickly been addressed, and it's done so in a very collaborative way, that really starts at the school classroom level. So that when our families have concerns around their scholars, academic experience, that they're starting first with their classroom teacher. And if they're not getting the response, or they don't feel like it was resolved at that level, that they are reaching out to the building principal. And if, at that time, they feel like it's not resolved, and then they reach out to the core instruction department. And then we can work together with the school and the teacher and the families to make sure that we're addressing those concerns appropriately. But we really just want to make sure that it's starting first with the teacher and the family and the scholar first.
And so we've already kind of touched on this, but I will go just reiterate, why are fewer students currently attending math courses at OPRF than in past years? And it's really why are fewer students attending, like, geometry slash integrated Math 2? It's our first year with integrated Math 2.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're kidding me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So again, we've already talked this through, but it was a result of all of those program changes that we made, starting in 2017. And making sure that we are, as District 97, we're sending our kids off that are prepared so that when they are in those higher level math courses, they're prepared, they feel solid, they are able to participate in a way that makes them feel confident and love math. So that as they go on to college, hopefully we are sending more of them out into those STEM fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you guys for this. I just have, I guess, suggestions slash questions. I think for a lot of parents, we, I'll speak to my own experience. I didn't know. I was like, I think, like, you're testing pretty high, so this was like multiple years of my son testing like the 98th, 99th percentile. But I think having some type of criteria that parents can look to, to say, have they passed this? Have they done that? Because you may get a teacher, like I did, who said, nope, your child's not ready. And then I was like, okay, I trust you. Then next year, a teacher was like, why haven't you done this? And I was like, the last teacher told me, and I was like, I just like followed their advice. So for that parent who either is like, I don't know, like, what you look for, like, what you consider would be helpful, but also that parent who's like, I know better than you, then you can be like, these are the things we look for.
Yeah.
Because I think it's just all like a mystery.
Can I, I, I love that, because I do think that that is one of the biggest issues, is the communication and the idea that it has to be parent-led, which it doesn't need to be, it can be staff-led, and it has been staff-led. But that is work that we are doing and has started this year in making sure that, you heard earlier about how they do their data dives. So it, so I also lead all of our MTSS leads in the district, all of our MTSS teams. So what we do, we talk about it during those meetings, like, are we not just looking at students that need intervention, but are we looking at also our tier plus, our tier plus plus students? What are we doing not only in that, to push them dive deeper into those standards during that time, but also, what are, are we meeting their needs? Is this a student we want to consider for acceleration? How are we talking about? So we are broadening those conversations this year to make sure. And we, for the state mandated process, we've moved to a rubric, and we've posted those online so that families can go in and kind of see from the very beginning what we're looking for. And it's all data, a lot of, most of it is historical data. Math scores, master connect scores, IAR scores that parents have access to or can quickly get access to, to just kind of see where their kid falls on that. So we're trying, but yes, I, we appreciate all feedback. I mean, parents email us frequently just to let us know. And we take every bit of it as, as important feedback to continue to evolve, because like I said, when I opened this up, the one thing we want to do is create transparency. We don't want it to look like we are hiding anything. We just want to make sure it's clear for everybody and that all of our students have access. All of our students have, understand all of their pathways, what is eligible to them, and how they can move forward if they're ready.
And I do think there's a little bit of a trust issue to the, you have a history.
Yeah.
That we've named here and named over the years. To think that we're going to put our students of color's selection to a program of advancement in the, like, in the hands of a staff that, and a process that hasn't yet kind of shown that we kind of get there on excellence, is, it's kind of, it's a little difficult. I understand wanting to balance the parents, parents that might not be evaluating them from a standard space, but I do think that there's, as a parent of a non-white child, that, I mean, like, you wonder if people are really, if they're getting a fair shake and everything. So like, I do think there's, I do think we have to find a balance and make sure we've got checks and balances in place until we get there.
But those are honest conversations we're also having within our leadership teams, and then we're encouraging our leadership teams to have with their staff. Especially as we have these MTSS meetings, those are the challenging and tough, complex conversations that we're having within those meetings around, like, what are we noticing? How are we identifying our students? And then, just like you said, like, with parent-teacher conferences coming around, are we identifying students that may qualify for acceleration? And then how are we preparing for our parent-teacher, our family conferences? And are we encouraging families, like, here are the dates, here are the deadlines, this might be a pathway for your student? So these are the conversations that we're starting to kind of shift within these spaces with our staff.
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up, that was leading to my next point. But I do think there's a lot of work to be done. I do think that bias is still creep up. I do still think that we just, I'm glad the conversation's being had, but how do we hold teachers accountable to say, are you challenging this kid? Have you talked to their parent about this? And not, this kid may have a behavior problem because they're bored, and you're just writing them off. But my next point, I forget what board meeting, but we heard a narrative that something's being taken away from STEM students so that we can push. So basically, we're having DEI students here. And so I think it's really important that we address that explicitly. And we're not taking anything away from any students. We're not just pushing black and brown kids up. These are kids that are qualified, that maybe didn't know what the process was. Maybe, you know, the kid was scared and didn't have a good feeling about math. So I think, I remember when the high school had, they did away with their track system, and there was like so much controversy. So just like, as we roll this out and like really clarify what this is and what this isn't, like, this isn't DEI math. And then the last thing is just like, it would be helpful to have that. I don't know, I'm attending the event tomorrow for like all of 30 minutes. Yeah, Bravo, man, Bravo runs away. So data, having data from OPRF to really help parents understand what the high school's saying, like, I think people just have it in their minds, like, they know best. And so I think for me, it was really helpful. I mean, I was kind of like, either way, but some parents are like, really gung-ho, like, I want you to go to Harvard, you have to do like these things. So helping them to understand, like, if you like skip over, you're missing like the foundation, is not going to help you in the long run. But I think having teachers who have that experience, if at all possible, if not tomorrow. But like, at some point, having teachers say that, because I feel like, I just, this conversation's been had a lot, and people are like asking me, and I'm like, if my kid doesn't want to do it, I don't want to force them. And then they have a, and I'm reading, well, I was reading a thing about, from Chalk Beat, about what, one of these states, they did algebra for all, and it failed horribly, Minnesota. And so like, just being clear, like, sometimes it's not, they're not prepared for it. So.
Thank you.
So kind of pulling off of what Holly and Shari said, just in terms of the building of the trust, one of the most illustrative quotes. one of the most illustrative quotes I got from a parent who had gone through the process and their child was thriving and doing well, but was, I never thought I'd be a reality show dance mom. And that's what I felt like I had to do to get my child the math they needed. And so as you're thinking this through, I, I love the process. I love that you're looking more to how to make it less adult-led and more, what can we do for the kids? And how can we listen? I, I took this away from the middle school presentation. Um, how do we make students where they're at, is both, I think, Ms. Court quotes. What are we, what are our students telling us with words and engagement? And how, you know, to Sharie's point, like, if someone is acting out, is that because they're just not being challenged? And with that, I'll throw in, you know, the shift from GTD to enrichment specialist in elementary was so pivotal because kids who maybe didn't do well on a test or what, still get that opportunity to hear that math and to explore it and to be engaged. What is the equivalent in middle school? What are we doing there? Because I will say one thing that I've gotten from parents who are in acceleration, who are still pushing for more acceleration, on occasion is, my kid is still not being challenged. And we'll talk about standards, like, well, they don't maybe know the standards yet, but they're not feeling challenged. Like they'll hear the math and they're done with it like this and then they're bored. So how can we get that enrichment specialist concept into the middle school? So kids who are doing math are feeling engaged, are feeling challenged. I mean, if acceleration is appropriate, they're doing acceleration. But if acceleration isn't there because they don't have the standards, how do you still get them challenged? And that's my challenge to you. Have fun with that. But I, I think it's a critical piece of it that keeps coming up.
I agree. And I think it's something that Dr. Shaw has always pointed back to. It comes down to tier one and differentiating and making sure that we have lessons that meet the needs of all of our learners. Because people are, we do have students that aren't ready to be accelerated, but they are ready, they are ready to be enriched and pushed along and to dive deeper and not just learn the facts of what that standard is. Um, and so it really comes down to those tier one practices and really utilizing the UDL framework and differentiation practices.
So that how do we develop, uh, those spaces for not only innovation, but also for enrichment? Like we have a sword lab, so how we may be able to pick this up? That's one of the conversations that we have as a team as well. And we're really looking forward to get to be innovative for that.
Perfect. I'd love to see your presentation in a year when all of that is starting to fulminate and really get into place. That'd be very interesting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, uh, item 7.4, workforce diversity and strategic staffing cycle. Workforce diversity data plan presentation, part two.
Yep. So we have Dr. Campbell Tomino and Dr. Collinor coming up for this presentation. Retitled.
No, it's fine. Just making sure.
What was the original title?
All staff professional learning is what's out there.
Oh, it is. Okay.
The original title was just angel.
I was just looking for it like I know it.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Um, so we are going to talk a little bit about professional learning, but mostly about staffing tonight. So this is our team that has been working on professional learning and I'm just going to lead the conversation because we are going to really just touch upon that and then jump right into staffing. As we do, we always put up our goals. And so because we're going to be talking a little bit about all of, uh, all employee professional learning, we're going to touch upon goal 1B. And then we're also going to talk about aligning resources related to staffing. So goal 1B, um, we're going to talk about the equity policy a little bit and, um, all, all employee professional learning. As far as how it relates to the equity policy, we really want to talk about, shall provide, um, professional development to strengthen employees' knowledge and skills for eliminating racial and ethnic disparities in enrichment. So this slide was presented to you last, um, in December and we had talked about, um, we've been in contact with all of these different groups in regard to how we can uplift the equity policy and really start to move some of that work forward in a collaborative way. And so what we wanted to talk about, um, tonight, or just touch upon tonight, is the idea that, um, it, on our January 6th Institute Day, we had Wes Forty come and do, um, a presentation with all staff. And so with that presentation, that we had every single employee, um, in a school site together in a room to discuss, um, implicit bias, cultural competency and equity. And we talked about our, um, some of the main highlight points, um, that are reviewed in our equity policy. And it was, and the intention was to kind of level set. So just bringing us back to where we started, um, and we collected data based upon that information. And most, we were in the eighties, 90% that felt like it was a good, it was a good topic and it was a good, um, it was a good place for us to start. But people are wanting more. They want to dig deeper. And so, um, we also spent a lot of time talking to the National Equity Project about where can we go from here? How do we start to just really dig in and get back to not just where we were, but moving it forward? And so that then when they move on to the next organization, then we're not kind of left hanging. And so we are looking to bring that, the National Equity Project back to work with us some more. And we are looking to create a district equity team. So kind of some of the same work that we had talked about before. If somebody's going to get coaching or, um, learn about specific strategies, then that team can then go and then train and work with other groups across the district. So the National Equity Project would then work with this equity team along with our senior leadership team to do some cut, uh, to do coaching, training, and then, um, uh, also some strategic advising for our professional learning plan. Um, and then we are looking to, um, bring that contract forward at our next business meeting for the board's review approval. But additionally, because you know, one size doesn't fit all, we're also looking at, um, the Center for Racial Justice in Education as they do a lot more with, uh, restorative practices and culturally responsive practices. And so they would be working with more of our MTSS teams and more with our instructional coaches in regard to focusing on those tier one practices in SEL because that's an area that, um, NEP doesn't necessarily work in. So they do a lot more in the healing and belonging pieces. And so that really is another group that we're looking at working with in the future. But that's not a contract that we're looking at bringing forward at that time, but just to help kind of fill out that, um, explanation of where we're looking at going. Again, and then we have collaboration is another group that we're looking at, um, moving forward with in the future. But they have a really different view on how they do their work. They are a performative arts group. And so what they do is they really look at bringing about, um, belonging through the arts. And so they, they have what they call artistic auditors. And so they collect information about the experiences of the community and students. And then based upon that information, they, um, ask for volunteers from students to, to staff, to community members, and then using that information, they, um, can create like an interactive program to then try to demonstrate the feelings about how things come together and hopefully bring about, um, just an understanding of what people have experienced in a performative way. So looking for some student leadership pieces and really to get some different people involved in that work from that. So again, just a holistic way to really start looking at our equity, um, policy, but to bring that initiative forward. So that's kind of where we are with our professional learning plan. The highlight of this though being that we are looking to move forward with a national equity project and that contract coming forward, um, in the, in a future meeting for the board's review. And then moving on to staffing, Anna and I will be talking tonight about our tentative staffing plan. And this actually, uh, is reflected in our 3D goal. And again, our goal is to make, um, our use of, uh, resources more transparent as well as strategic. And, um, we will be talking about our strategies. And one of the things that we brought forward first was the idea, yes?
Can I just ask you to unpack that goal a little bit? I read it a couple of times and I was trying to figure out exactly what it, so it seems like there's a lot in there?
There's a whole lot in there. Yes. So, you know, and again, we keep going back to kind of what happened last year, right? And so, you know, our staff is one of our biggest resources. And so how do we use our staff to help support our students? And to, um, not just help our students, but how do our buildings run? What's happening, you know, with, with all of the resources that are occurring? So, you know, we had lots of conversations about, um, our buildings and we need to be able to make sure that, um, one of the slides you'll see tonight is we are actually showing our staff in a different way. It's not just, um, here are the sections and here are the classroom teachers. But how are the teachers assistants? How many teachers assistants are we using? How many admin are in the buildings? Um, how many people do we have in our building supporting edu, supporting the education of our students? And so as we're looking at that, we're trying to make it more visible so that then we're talking about, it's not just you have a classroom teacher and they have this many students. It's also how many adults might be in the room to support that classroom. Um, when you talk about the MTSS specialist, how many out of the classroom people may be in that building? We don't talk about early childhood a lot, but we have two, you know, very large early childhood programs. So where do those, how does that staffing, um, affect those numbers of staff? And so our hope is to make things more visible and then also strategically. So when we talk about our, our numbers or class sizes increasing, um, how does that impact us? And is that really, there are things that we have to do in regard to the contract. Some people don't know that really we are much lower than even our contractual guidelines. And so there are things that we need to do to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and using our resources in the best way. So making visible what we're actually doing. Um, and I'm not sure that everybody has been able to see that the way we've displayed it in the past.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
We also did, this presentation went to Fork and the spirit of what you just said just reminded me, um, kind of historically, the staffing model is always kind of staffing discussion went to Fork. And this time, we've kind of reconstituted Fork and we're able to bring this to Fork as well.
Yeah, and we'll talk about, because we, we did present this to Fork. Fork presented some different questions to us and we were able to embed a couple of those things. Because then when they asked questions, it was, okay, that might be something that we need to explain as we move forward.
Speaking of Glenn, I'm just going to say for anyone who's unaware, Fork is our.
Financial oversight committee.
Yeah.
Financial oversight, resource and, yeah, resource committee. Yes.
I want to say also, but Gavin, to the point earlier, that, um, goal statement does need to be revised. Um, yeah.
I think it would be hard for somebody to read it and be like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What you described makes sense.
Yes.
It may just be that it's more than a bullet point.
Yes, yes. We can work on that.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you for your question.
Of course.
Okay, and so the purpose of the staffing plan is so that we are more transparent in how are we using our resources and that, um, people understand that when we talk about, um, changes in staffing, how are we using these changes? And why are these changes important and, um, what the changes actually mean? And so for this year, as we talk through this presentation, we do expect our staffing to remain relatively consistent. And so we did put this up in December, but this is a reiteration of that. So these are the steps that we've already completed, which, um, we, as last, as we just discussed last week, we did, um, go over this presentation with the financial oversight committee. Um, but we've also talked about this with our principals and our district leadership team. Um, and so that we've gone over these numbers. However, this is still a tentative plan, right? We still are early in the game. We're still doing registration. You're going to hear about some of those things. And those things are important because we have some, um, we're going to be enrolling students as long as they're still registering and as long as they're still coming. We have eligibility for, um, special education and multilingual. And so this is tentative and we're still early in the year. So tonight is a tentative plan. Next month, we hope to come with a more finalized plan because that's what we're going to be, um, tentative, for the most part, staffing our numbers on. We will only add as we get a higher number that really causes us to say, we definitely need to hire from there. March, we hope to finalize our plan for our teaching assistants. In April, we do plan to send out our notices of assignment for our teaching staff. But we also plan to, no later than April, present to the board our leadership role proposal. And that's a no later than April. And then by May, we hope to send out our notices of assignment for our teaching assistants and also be able to have our assignments out for the leadership roles. So that then people know before they go to break and we kind of get back into that routine. So again, part of our staffing plan is just some commonalities and things that people should just be aware of. So every year annually, we have some vacancies, right? Those vacancies become available due to non-renewals. So those are people who, you know, maybe their performance isn't up to par or decide that this, this profession isn't really for them, things like that. We have retirements. We also have people who've decided to move on, right? And so we have vacancies every year for a variety of reasons. Teachers are also eligible to transfer. Maybe they were moved this year. They want to go to another building next year. Maybe they take on a new role. All of those things are possible and they're always able to apply for, for another position or for a transfer to another building. Additionally, the district has varying needs from year to year. So Nancy, you were just asking about how might you be able to have an MTSS or an enrichment specialist? At, we have MTSS interventionist at the middle schools, but maybe we want an enrichment specialist at the middle school. So that would be an example of be creative, um, be creative. Or things may remain the same, or we may eliminate something, or something is redefined. So those are all things that based upon district's need, we would resolve those. But in general, for this, under, for this particular presentation, the highlight of this slide is that we will not have a reduction in force, which is what that RIF is. And what, one of the questions that came up in Fork is that people want to, will tell us more about that. That is actually a school code process. So that is where we actually have to follow a specific timeline. There are notifications to be issued. And if anything changes, then we would have to come back and then do a rehire process. We're not doing that. We don't have that case. If we need to do that in the future, that may be, but this is not the year. We don't have to do that. We're not in the situation.
Is there a threshold of like number of employees that would constitute it being labeled as a RIF?
No, what we would need to do is if in our enrollment, it said we were cutting a particular amount of teachers and it, like our vacancies became, like weren't enough based upon the number of sections that we had available, then we would say we would need to RIF. So if we came back and said, we need to cut 18 teachers based upon enrollment, budget, things like that, then we would. And there are districts.
If it's one, do we still have to go through that process?
You do not, but some districts choose to do it every year. So there, so there's not ever a limit. So we can choose to do it or we can have our strategy or our methodology that Anna is about to go into, say, we should do it based upon our numbers, right? So some districts just say, every year, we are going to have a RIF. And they determine that they're going to RIF their first year teachers every year. That's just a process that they go through. That's just how they function. We could say, based upon our finances, we need to max out every single classroom. And, and that would require us to have an excess of so many teachers. And then therefore, we would RIF that excess number of teachers. We could, um, cut a particular type of teacher. And then, um, if that was the case, if they, if we didn't have enough vacancies to fill. And then if that was the case, if they, if we didn't have enough vacancies to fill those teachers into or they didn't qualify to go into that, then those teachers would be. That is you?
So as Natasha said, our staffing is driven first by enrollment and our section numbers. So you've seen a slide like this before last year. So our methodology remains the same as it has for the last two years. Which is really frankly, that we use enrollment, current enrollment, to project next year's enrollment. So if there's 70 kids in the second grade classroom at a school, you see next year, there will be 70 third graders at that school. The two grade levels where that's a little bit trickier to do is first grade, because we do tend to see an increase in students in that grade level cohort going from kindergarten to first grade. Reasonably that's because there are kindergartners receiving education at private kindergarten and then they come to D97 for first grade. So we do adjust for that by looking at current grade one through three enrollment. And then kindergarten is particularly hard to estimate for obvious reasons. They're not in the district yet. We don't know how many of them are out there. So we use, to estimate that particular grade level, we use a, called the Caserta Report. Dr. Caserta is a demographer who, who provides us, provides us with a report based on several factors, things like birth rates, things like housing units in the community, to give us his best estimate of how many kindergartners he thinks will be coming into each school in a given year. We use, he calls it scenarios B. So there's three different scenarios. He provides the scenarios B is the most, he calls the most likely scenario. And then we set maximum class, section sizes at 29 for grades six through eight, 24 at grades one through five, maximum size at 20 for grade kindergarten and for preschool. And then two other things we consider and have to factor into to make sure that we are having appropriate section sizes is to make sure that we have the legally required 30-70 split in special education to general education students in classrooms. That means classroom sizes have to be sufficiently large enough. If we have, you know, four special education students that need to be receiving education in a classroom, we have to have a classroom that's larger than 10. And then we also need to ensure that our staff-student ratio in our bilingual classes is about 70, excuse me, 90% of Gen Ed classroom sizes. So using this methodology, in SY26, we project that we will need 206 Gen Ed, CoTaught, Instructional, and RISE, which is what we use to call multi-need sections. That's a shift from 2013, excuse me, 2013, this year. As Natasha said, this is based on current enrollment projections. We continue to moderate enrollment by grade level, by school, on into the beginning of next school year. So to the, something we see enrollment changes, we'll adjust accordingly. Of course, we're always in conversation with our principals. And we're thinking about things like space constraints and maybe other particular factors happening at that school we need to consider. And just a reminder of, this is a historical K8 enrollment over time. And you saw on the prior side that there was a bit of a steeper kind of decrease in the number of sections when we implemented this particular methodology and strategic staffing process in SY24. So this is just a kind of reminder of where we've been in terms of enrollment. Those SY24 changes were largely driven by the decrease in enrollment we saw since COVID. So we kind of caught up with ourselves. And so now we're seeing slightly decreasing enrollment, we think, mostly leveling off. And so I just put this up here to suggest to you that, you know, the biggest changes are probably behind us for now. At this point, we're just kind of, you know, making some, some smaller changes here and there.
Next slide.
So as a result of these projections, this, again, this is a table that we've shown last year. The average section, average min and max section size is at different grade bands. So next year, we think that the average sections in K2 will be about 20, in 3.5, about 21, and in 6.8, about 25. And then here, just again, this is related to the table you just saw, but we broke it out differently because we have different contractual requirements for kindergarten and different requirements for grades one through five. So we broke it out differently here. But the dark green here, you're seeing, that's our projected average size at each of those grade bands. And then the lighter green, so we're sort of kind of showing you the buffer we have between our projected average. And then the, the green in the middle is our projected maximums. So you can see we have a little bit of a buffer in terms of how far we can go until we get to our contractual maximums.
What does it mean for kindergarten where there's no projected maximum?
20 is the maximum.
20 is the maximum.
Thank you. 20 is the maximum and it's total lines.
Okay.
And then we broke this out in terms of the number of core instruction staff. And really this is FTE, core instruction staff, FTE, and this is staff at building. So this does not include district office staff or any sort of non-core instruction. So, you know, buildings and grounds kind of staff are not included here. So we anticipate that these enrollment levels will require nine fewer FTEs among the core instruction building staff.
Next slide.
This is the last slide. But again, just kind of thinking about where we've been historically, we saw that change in enrollment over time. But we include this here because this shows us the average student-to-teacher ratios. So we're, the point here is that in SY24, when we implemented this methodology and strategic staffing process to staff according to enrollment, we, we are slightly better, but that's just sort of where we were in terms of ratios pre-COVID. So again, once we kind of adjusted for that declining enrollment that we saw after COVID, we're back to where we have been historically over the last 10 years.
I'm sorry, so could you just, so we are at 14, 9, and 20, 23?
Yes. We don't.
It's like a big jump. Yeah, it's a big jump.
From 23 to 24?
Well, 22 to 23 and then 23, right? Like.
Right. And 24, again, is when we had that, when we sort of implemented our strategic staffing process. So that, that increase is partly driven by that.
And just one point you mentioned that requires nine fewer FTEs. And those will occur based on resignations or renewals. Because we're not, we're not going to, it's not active, it's a passive.
Yeah, yes.
Attrition.
Yes.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 7.5, registration, look back and ask for my 26 update.
Something was coming up. That means we have no idea who's driving technology. But I'm sure it's in good hands.
Yep. He has a man in that race.
Yeah. He knows how to use the equipment.
Thank you for the opportunity to come today. And there's been a number of presentations, so I'll kind of go through this and answer any questions. So we have a team. I'm here presenting on behalf of our team, Rosa, Nidia, and Myra. All have different roles. So Rosa's our SIS manager. Nidia's our main district registrar. And then Myra's the data manager, who also focuses on, is our McKinney-Bento liaison. So tonight, we'll talk about an update and then kind of see some launch of the target dates that we're looking at for registration for the upcoming year. Write a little date on that of where we're going. So that current work and then the support, what's next, how we're supporting our families. Similar to the last group and as we do in our presentations, the work of this is in Goal Area 3, line and resources. And then you'll see as we talk about this too, how many connections, all the different departments and registration, timing of that and the resources, whether it's curriculum or tables and chairs, whatever that might be in classrooms, how it all works. So how do we support our families? This we showed and a lot of work by Amanda last year when we were welcoming new families and really thinking about like, how are we presenting this information and providing, making it accessible? So our flyers are out there. We'll continue to have them. We'll share them with our partners as registration, whether it's new families, kindergarten, so our preschools and all of that. Also reminder, we still have Let's Talk, that we're leveraging for that. And that was a tool we had last year, not tool we added, but a feature. So people can call in and they can leave messages in their own language and that can be translated for us to be able to respond and then vice versa back and forth with that. So again, accessible for our families and online, paper, all of that stuff. Website, we'll continue to update as well as we have two different forms. Because a new student is different than a returning student form, so we make sure it's clear. We continue to keep this up to date. And all the new information that we need to provide, that's all on our district website. And Amanda does a great job of being able to send that stuff out in our communications to our families. And then also including that information to our school buildings to just be able to take that information. Because there are times that they may read that communication or see that just to get them. I'm sure you said it, how many times do you have to say it over and over for people to see it and read it and then see that? Our team talked about the three that are there. They are all bilingual staff. So it's helpful when we're processing any type of our registration. They'll talk about it a little bit, about how we're translating those documents and that. But they're able to do that. And they're doing translation service, interpretation. And they come in, they'll help even guide through, they'll have devices here to go through that process with them. So they will do that, but they're also, obviously that's not the only language that we're supporting families with. So we have other tools and ways that we can continue to support them too here more when they're at home. Partnerships, a lot of partnerships. Village, Early Childhood, West 40. West 40's come in and done some training for our team and thinking about what are our processes around, whether it's general ed, special ed, our McKinney-Bento students, and what is that process? Just to make sure we level set and then for us to kind of step back. What are we doing? Where do we need to redesign or be more clear on what that process is? So we've gone through that training with our team. Early Childhood, we're closely with Ebony and the Early Childhood Collab to look at the questions that we're asking of our new families coming in in kindergarten to be able to ensure the data is the right data to inform what is the next step. So what are we doing and what's the success and all of those types of things. This is a balance between the feedback that we get and we think about how long the form is and how many questions are asked. So really making sure what we're asking is the critical data and the information that we need to inform or support our partners that we have around here. This is, as you heard earlier too, from Anna and Natasha talking about like how much enrollment and they reference that to be towards staffing. That's a connection we have and a collaboration with them. And the reason why we continue to push these dates up, to be able to have this information to inform next steps. Again, I referenced it too, like tables and chairs and all of that stuff in classrooms. It's really, really important that we can get the information and registrations as soon as possible so we can be as precise as we can. And obviously all these other, there's so many people sitting back there and that. And we work with connections to all these different departments and buildings and schools and their AAs and everybody. So we could do it without any of that. Timeline. So there's a few action steps that are going on, going on this year. So we reviewed, updated our processes, language, website. One other thing to like certain forms that we would need to do, so the Secure Gun Storage Form. And that process is included in the registration forms. So all the families can go through that. Talked about supporting Spanish translations and then just communication planning. So again, collaborating with our team and getting that out to families. So those are kind of in this form. But you can see as we start that back in September, and really we started it as soon as we launched this in February, like collecting feedback of like what's working, what's not working, what can we do the next time? And so on from there. Big things to kind of call out. So how to train you with the AAs on January 6th. We will to do work with them and support them and collaborate. But again, the big piece of what we're, Nidia is doing a lot of that work in registration. They're supporting with the gap communication, getting out that response to families to just make sure we continue to get those in and however we can support that in the buildings. And then two dates that are up there. We are targeting to have the new student registration on February 19th and then returning student registration on February 26th. So that is a, last year we had a two-week window. But now that we've had a whole year of having all families approve the residency or go through the residency process, we've, they'll learn enough and we're going to take that down to a week again to give our information earlier for everybody. This is a quick high level over the last three years, one to call out. So if we look at the first one, so number of registrations with residency verification process. So in 2023, it was just under 1,000. This last year, we have 56, almost 5,700 students in that process. So again, that's a full review of all of their documentation to again verify the residency. And think of the number of staff. The two full-time staff were part of that. But we had our AAs come in during the summer and provide some of that support. And that's partially because of the next date. In 2023, we didn't launch until May 5th. So we're three weeks in before the end of the year. We need that support and they're coming in and doing that, which is great. And it's great to have that connection with the AAs and do all of that. But now you have six or seven people that are reviewing documents. You have different perception, like perceptions, but different ways that they're looking at it, reviewing it. And there's not the consistency for that. So going to, Nidia is, I mean, that is a long run from February 22nd to the start of the year to review all of those. But it does create some consistency of what are they looking at? And creating some expertise within that piece of it and how we're going to approach. So helpful. And then the last one is the number of students registered by June 1st. So you can see the returning students, new students, and a huge difference from last year to this year just by bumping that up. And again, we want to continue to have that number be closer to that total enrollment by that June 1st. Next steps, again, continue to support our families, but that support extending into the classroom. And it's really very into the buildings. That's not for the summer, because when we start the school year, there's a lot of things that are happening, orientation, things that they're doing with their kids. But what does that look like after? So how do we continue to streamline and really make that process when a student starts on October 16th? Or when they start on February 16th? But make sure that process is smooth and we're continuing to do that and work through that process. Update the website. And I talked a little about kind of constant review and update our processes and make sure that they're clean and transparent and everything. Last thing, goals. So we talked a little bit about those, trying to have the majority, 90% of registrations by April 15th. And then when we go on summer break, having that 95%, to give one more year before we bump that number higher. This is the second year for us doing this. And then looking at again, the Spanish and English translations directly and kind of streamlining that process a little more. I think that's all. That's it.
So did you, so thank you. Good job. I mean, that's, that's great. We'd bring it earlier, I think it's helpful. But did you say that now we did this process, what's with all the residency documents? Returning students, do they still have to do the same number of residency documents? I am, as someone who just can't believe we always have to do everything from like getting a passport is difficult. So signing your kid up for a driving test, also difficult. Is there, I wonder, getting the word out about what to gather? Because I've, you know, that's, I feel like the biggest challenge, getting your stuff together.
And well, and that's, it's posted on the website, but when we put out that initial presentation here, the dates, here are all those documents. And it is a process to do that. But again, the consistency and the reason of going to everybody. And again, compared to other districts, we've looked at how many documents do certain districts ask for? How many do we ask for? And we align, we're not the highest and we're not the lowest, or we're kind of right in the middle.
Is there a future state where you could carry over documents year to year as long as you prove your residency address didn't change?
I mean, in theory, some documents could just be used if it's a mortgage or state right now.
Well, no, because you have to get the most recent. That's what I'm saying, like, is there a possibility to carry, to carry over? I mean, obviously we want to be diligent. I'm not saying that the process should lack integrity, but I, you know, certainly people move within a park. But moving, you know, the residency seems to, if it's the same as the year before, it's highly unlikely you also get electricity. Do you know what I mean? I just wonder if there's a way for returning students, future state to have less documents that they have to gather.
Yeah.
As a known person in the community.
What about unknown people?
I think that you have to really go after them. Be very strict.
I will second that this looks really good and it's nice to just see how it's gotten more streamlined and effective over time. And I know, I share Holly's pain. And I know, I share Holly's pain that sometimes, you know, the process can feel a little laborious, but I do, you know, I do think you guys are doing a great job making it more efficient and consistent and getting the information out when in a timely way, not waiting till the summer when everybody's kind of off doing whatever. Though the one question or sort of observation is I know in six days, we'll have a new president sworn in. And they're, he is promising very quick action targeting immigrant communities. And I know that the last time that happened, it's sort of created a lot of fear and misinformation about what people still were or weren't eligible for and what some of the risks of taking advantage of things like public education and benefits could be. And so you don't necessarily need to have an answer now unless you do, but just thinking about as we message this and as we're reaching out to our different communities, including newer residents of Oak Park who may have come from other countries, like just, I think, getting and recognizing that that's going to happen and making sure that we're taking advantage of relationships and sort of channels of communication we have to make sure that people understand, yes, we're going to ask you for certain things. No, we're not going to share it with immigration enforcement. Yes, you're entitled to this, you know, without any kind of repercussions, I think, could be really important.
Yeah, I don't know if you want, I know we're kind of.
This is pertinent, we've been planning for this period.
Can you come on up, please?
Oh, for sure.
So I think as part of that too, is like being upfront in communication or that process. So it has what we're sitting on. So I know this is something that.
Recognizing that people are going to be worried even if they don't ask about it.
Yeah, so I think you added another layer of something to think about, but what we have been chatting with and also Dr. Starks has been very involved in this discussion too. We have a statement, a mock-up ready for our website as it relates to the current rules that apply to individuals that might have different immigration status. And we're also plain and clear on that. So we have a statement. The missing layer, I think you just nailed it. We can throw it in there as it relates to the registration process. So those families also understand our policy and the existing laws. That's not going to be an impediment for you to register.
Right.
So that draft will go out to the board tomorrow. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to address that in line with the work that Michael's doing.
Related to that, since we're having this conversation, I, I know that I'm currently a graduate student and they have gone and spoken with staff about what to do if someone shows up. Are you working on a staffing plan as well?
Yeah, that's why I referenced Dr. Starks. Because we are thinking through that lens. And actually, when we were having our discussions, I felt a good synergy. I'm kind of excited about doing that work with our staff alongside with her so that we're clear and people actually understand what to do, but it's not coming off in a way like it's very ominous and oh my goodness. Like this is just work we have to do as a public school district. So yes, we do have a plan. And we are rolling it out and the board will be fully apprised.
Thank you.
So my, sorry, my only other question is a really easy one, which is when do you anticipate the dates being firm for the rollout? So we can tell people it's coming up, but.
We're going to put it on the website tomorrow. Unless anything like crazy happens, but we're in kind of final stages. The one piece that we're working through right now, the bigger final stages that once you get all that updated, then translated, so we're not translating everything all the time. We get it all updated and then we're going through that Spanish translation. That's the piece of it. We still believe that we did, from our first draft, we bumped that date back. But it's still before last year's and in line, but at the same time. But we're going to put it on the website tomorrow.
Thank you.
Just the only other, just to sort of carry through that thought a little bit in terms of potential kind of concerns folks will have is I think it could be useful to think about what the other kind of points of connection are with immigrant families where those kinds of fears may materialize. It could be around free and reduced lunch status, you know, whatever it is, but to just, I think that it's great that we're developing the messaging and stuff. I think being really proactive with it is going to be, and using trusted intermediaries is going to be really important because I do think there's going to be a lot of understandable concerning fear.
Agreed, Gary.
And I would say there's a lot of the connections that were built over the last year that we have at being in close conversation with the village, with the other partners that.
Yeah, so we can take advantage of.
Some of the churches and that, we've got good connections and relationships with them that we've built.
Yep, great, thank you.
Yeah, and as Michael and Luis are finishing up, I guess I just wanted to point out two very quick but important things, that these two presentations are also connected to each other. They all happen in the center of our organization, like the operational excellence. But the more that we move up that registration date, the more we have better data for staffing. That allows us to staff efficiently with good data instead of those last minute changes like, oh, we just popped a kindergarten, you know, and that means we create more stability for the focus of the instructional thing. So, you know, not only like using these data, building these really high integrity data systems. It's not glossy and all that interesting, I mean, except to, you know.
Except how interesting you all are.
But it, it creates more capacity to do the things that we need to do for students. And so I just want to thank, you know, all of our operational folks for, you know, for creating that. And I think to the point of this last conversation, it's also our values show up in those spaces too. So thanks to all of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Nikki?
You come next, I'm on the agenda.
Are you the consent agenda?
Oh, no.
You can stay though.
No, I'll come back.
All right, well, that takes us to agenda item number eight, consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education of Oak Park, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Burns?
Yes.
Sperla?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tara Johnson?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Josh Strickland?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Motion proposed.
All right, discussion and action items. First one is Policy 750, school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. Oh, Luis, welcome.
Thank you, sir. I don't have the clicker.
I gotta use tele.
You can, you'll try, okay.
So I don't have a jury.
So members of the board, Dr. Shaw, this presentation should be brief and I think it's pretty straightforward. What I'm, we'll be talking about today is a very easy amendment to Board Policy 750, which deals with school admissions and student transfers. If you can go to the presentation mode, because I think this gets skipped. Thank you, thank you. So the purpose behind this policy amendment is in, is that there is language in the existing policy, and I highlighted in red, that states, "A student seeking to transfer in the district must serve the entire term of any suspension or expulsion imposed for any reason by any public or private school in this or any other state before being admitted into the school district." That is not mandatory language. It has to be in our policies. It's actually, the board has the option to adopt something like that pursuant to state code. Our district is an elementary school district, kindergarten through eighth grade. And I, from my perspective, and I think hopefully this board would agree that the idea is if we have something that is not a mandated expulsion, you have the discretion to decide whether to uphold it or not. So if we click to the next slide or scroll to the next slide, the statutory language that I'm referring to that makes that paragraph optional is that a school district may adopt a policy, providing that if a student is suspended or expelled for any reason from any district in this or any other state, the student must complete the entire term. It doesn't mean we have to. The only times we have to, next slide, please. I feel like something, one of them is missing from here. Long story short, there's a statutory provision that states that when a student is in possession of a firearm, they commit battery of a staff member, or they are knowingly possessing, selling, or distributing narcotics, those are instances where a board must uphold an expulsion from, from another district. If that is not the case, then this board has the discretion whether or not to uphold it. So to address that, the proposed amendment is to basically strike that last pair, sentence of that paragraph and leaving everything the same so that the discretion that's within the board's purview can be enforced and we can deal with those students as we ban.
The policy committee agrees.
Sorry. Board member Holly indicated that Board Policy Committee agrees. This was forwarded to them prior to this presentation and the input was such that it sounds like a good amendment.
Can I ask, I'm also generally in favor of us doing this. The one question I had was that last caveat you mentioned about firearms, et cetera. And, and we don't have to dig into it now, but I'm wondering, does the original district have discretion in terms of how to discipline a student in those instances?
Good question. So in a state like Illinois, we have our school code, which dictates those things that are typically expellable. Different states have different criteria.
But I guess what I'm getting at, sorry, not to cut you off, is like, let's say prior district, something happened, they chose to expel and it was one of those things. But had it happened in District 97, we could have considered punishment short of expulsion. Like, we're, we're still obligated to uphold their decision to expel?
Yeah, if you can, so I had actually included the statutory language that mandates that Gavin, but I'm not sure why the slide's not in here. I will forward that to you, but basically that language.
But I don't want to hold it up.
It's concrete. It states that we have to honor those, but we may have a more strict policy. And I'm suggesting we don't need it as an elementary school.
Okay.
You are welcome. And I think, next slide. That's it, thank you.
All right, so we're looking for action on this tonight. Does anybody else have questions or comments? Does somebody want to read the motion?
I move the Board of Education, approve the proposed revisions of Policy 7.5 as presented.
Second.
Carney?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sperla?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Josh Strickland?
Yes.
Tara Johnson?
Yes.
All right, 9.2, Bi-Elementary School Donation. Is there just, it says discussion and action, but I think we discussed it last time.
Yes, if there are any questions, yeah, if there are any questions that we can ask the host.
Any questions about it? Does somebody want to read the motion?
I do, I really do. I've been waiting to read the motion all night. Board of Education, approve the $1,000 donation to support the B3 student group at Bi Elementary.
Second.
Moore?
Yes.
Tara Johnson?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sperla?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Josh Strickland?
Yes.
Motion proposed.
All right, discussion items, 10.1, Lakeview slash Sunrise Transportation Contract Renewal.
Yes, so Dr. Sheila Johnson is coming up to present this contract. And it's on for a discussion and then we'll be on again for action next time. And Michael Aaron Storick is also coming up.
Sure is. Look at you guys coming up.
It's the what, yeah.
Good evening, board. So our current contract for Lakeview ends in June of this year, June of 2025. We engaged in negotiation process starting in December. We had a couple of meetings with Lakeview. The process was amicable. They value our partnership and they wanted to extend the contract. So I'm going to read off a few numbers here. So in 2223, we paid 4.3 million in total transportation costs. And 2324, we paid 6.3 million. And 2425, we paid, so far to date, we paid 2.7 billion. So of those costs, we received reimbursement through our transportation claim. In 2223, we received 2.4 million reimbursement for transportation costs. And in 2324, we received 2.5 million. So we are going to receive reimbursement for 2425 as well. For the renewal for Lakeview, they agreed to 5% increases for each year of the contract renewal. And the proposed increases are embedded in our five-year projections that we shared with the group. We have 6% increases embedded in projections for each year of the five years. And Lakeview also said they will give us a 10% discount for McKinney-Vento for the first year of the contract because we've been having ongoing discussions with them about McKinney-Vento. We're considering exploring other options for McKinney-Vento because we believe there may be cheaper costs. And Michael can provide a little bit more details about McKinney-Vento.
Yeah, and, and as part of this process, they've been very upfront and, and great with the conversation. So as part of the contract, that would still be there if, as we go out and we're exploring going out to a bid process for that, to see what other options are out there. Some of the things to share this with them is sort of the timeline from we are, have a new student come in and to be able to get them that transportation and how quickly they can get a, get their car and their driver and all that stuff set up. So that's piece plus the cost piece to it. So we're going through that exploration phase right now and we'll plan to be putting a bid out for specifically just McKinney-Vento transportation to see what that would look like. If things don't transpire in that way, Lakeview still said that they would, they would honor the price and the quote and everything that they did and it came down 10% from their original proposal around just McKinney-Vento itself.
So they're allowing us the opportunity to explore other options, but if we choose not to, we can still continue to use Lakeview services.
And sorry, just to clarify, is it a 10% decrease from a prior proposal or from what we're paying now?
What we're paying now.
What we're paying now, okay. And can I ask Sheila, the numbers you shared for transportation expenses varied a lot over the, across those three years. Can you say a little bit about why they vary so much?
Yes, from, from 2223, there was a significant drop, the four point, from 4.3 million to 6.3 million. And the rate for that year, well, there were three different rates in the past, 2223. They were 4.72% for regular transportation, 3% for sped. So in 2324, it was one consistent rate for 7.5% for all services. So the rate significantly increased.
Okay.
And then it went back down in 2425 to 6%.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, the rates vary significantly.
Yeah, because you said, I think you said it went from 6.3 million to 2.7 million.
Currently.
Which is a huge drop.
Well, we're still, this is 2425, the year is still, yeah, this is half the year.
Oh, got it, okay, yeah.
So that's just to date through January.
Sorry, I missed the to date part.
Yeah.
And what's the term of our current contract, five years?
No, we had two-year extensions embedded in the original contract, so we extended it twice. So we're proposing to have a five-year extension of the contract. And that's the maximum amount that we can go per the school code. After this five-year contract, we are required to go out to bid.
But we can explore other vendors.
Yes.
And not jeopardize this current contract.
For McKinney-Vento.
Only for McKinney-Vento. Yes. I mean, we have the opportunity to go out to bid for the entire contract, but we want to continue to build our relationship and our partnership with Lakeview since we've been using their services for over 30 years. And we feel like the 5% increase was favorable.
We've also applied for a sustainability grant with them, if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, so as part of that, maybe there's a couple of different ways to do that. So for electric buses, so there's a grant that's out there right now that they've collaborated with us to do that. And they are, they have to identify, there's a lot there, but they have to identify a number of buses that they can. I don't know if this one, they have to dispose of a bus or put it out.
Disposal, yes.
Yeah, so they have identified three that they could do. So they'll be filing that grant or they're, they just submitted that grant on our behalf in collaboration with us. So then if there are additional opportunities to do that, that's something that we can continue to work through.
And they are willing to put that language in the contract as well. If we wanted to continue to explore the electric school buses, they're going to put that provision in the contract as well. And I want to take a moment to thank Rob, he was a part of this process, and also Felicia, the four of us. We were meeting with Lakeview and, and the team, I think, did a good job with communicating with Lakeview.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to 11, concluding items, board remarks. Does anybody have a remark or two they'd like to share, Colleen?
I have one, I'm sorry.
Remarkable.
If an email has not yet gone out to parents of rising sixth graders about middle school connection, I would please ask that we do that very soon. The, I know it's hard to think about summer, what, two degrees outside? But summer school, summer camp, I should say, planning is already starting now.
It went out Friday.
Oh, good, I missed it. Oh, good, I missed it. I have four thousand unread emails.
Well, and it was, and it was just an estimate of when it would be, what week it would be.
Okay.
It's the week of August eleventh, yeah.
You gotta communicate with families more than once, so.
Yeah.
Like, any families in particular that come to my.
I didn't say either, Colleen. Yeah, and we can send it to, targeted to the uh, rising sixth graders.
Yeah, and even, I think the messenger matters too, like, even if it's not the district, that having our building principal say like, hey, I know like, it's hard to rip off the warm blanket of fifth grade, but, or don't. Here's what we can do to help, you know?
I wonder, I don't know if both middle schools do this, but at Julian, they have an eighth grade like, corner in the, in the weekly email, but just is like, here's what's coming up, all this stuff, so it's, it could be beneficial at the elementary level too for fifth graders. Uh, I just wanna make one very quick remark, which Holly already made earlier, but I just wanna end cap with it, that we're very excited to have a tentative agreement with OPTA. And look forward to that working its way through.
Here, here.
Thank you to everyone, thank you Stephanie, if not listening, thank you Stephanie. And thank you to everyone who was on the, the negoti, at the negotiating table.
Um, if there are no others, assignment reports, FAC has nothing, Fork, anything you wanna share beyond what we talked about already?
Um, yes, we had a meeting last week, uh, we need more Fork members and we put out a lot of requests. We just had two new members join and um, we've got two veterans and um, they are, and we've got three meetings on the calendar. I'm really looking forward to kind of, we're working with this team and so if you know anyone that is interested or you're listening right now to this recording, please email and uh, or through Let's Talk or email and let us uh, and come and join us.
Um, parent teacher advisory, Katie.
We are meeting next Tuesday for our first meeting. Um, and actually, one of the uh, some of the topics that we talked about with middle school, I think, are really relevant to some of the things we're gonna be talking about and culture, climate, stuff, and we're looking forward to that as well.
Great. Uh, sustainability policy.
Electric buses. But I think, yeah, um, I don't think we have anything.
I don't think we have anything to report since the last meeting, but will soon. Intergovernmental liaison reports, IGOV.
So IGOV met on Saturday, we um, are talking about pulling together a so you want, so you wanna run for office document, but not just for each board, for more all-encompassing for our community. We also had Peggy Kell from the League of Women Voters come and speak and talk about running for office and what the league does and how they um, support candidate forums, so that's it.
Uh, PTOC.
Yeah, not yet.
Not in twenty twenty-five. Not since the last time we were here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, CEC.
Not yet.
OPEF.
meets tomorrow.
Alright, Oak Park River Forest Community Council.
Meets on Thursday.
Alright, Ed Redd.
Um, there was a meeting in December, where there was a lot of discussion about uh, Public Act one hundred and twenty-five ninety-one. Which has to do with kind of, like that, like, they kind of call back for a referendum way, so basically waits to get more money without having a referendum. And so there was a lot of details around that, if you're interested in that at all. There, they announced a twenty-four, twenty-five annual initiative, which is pretty much the same thing that they've been doing, which is they're upholding the state paid lead law, um, updating the Dual Credit Quality Act, which affects us not so much as an elementary district. And then still trying to work on deprioritizing uh, schools as a polling place, and then they have their.
Deprioritizing what?
Schools as a polling place, which is not gonna go anywhere, but they keep working on it. And they're gonna have a legislative dinner later this month.
Thank you. Um, okay, that takes us to committee of the whole agenda preview. So it looks like there're Lincoln and Longfellow logic model presentations, elementary math pilot resource introduction, comprehensive district safety plan. Do, does the transportation contract need to be on this as well, or is that for to?
Yeah, we just focused on the, the major presentations, but yeah, we will have the, we'll bring the transportation contract, anything that was on discussion.
Okay. Any suggested additions, questions, et cetera?
No, but talking about the agenda just reminds me, um, with the contract, it's a ratif, the ratification process for OPTA, different than us, and if it doesn't align, align to a board meeting, that we can take a vote, just everyone being aware that we might have to have a special board meeting for that.
I'm gonna send around a poll to get some dates that everybody's available, just to have them.
Yeah.
Do we have to approve after dating?
Yes.
Okay.
And um, there, there, we've got some work to do and then.
Yeah.
Ratification is eight days, the teachers have to review it, and then, then the vote, then we come after that.
Okay. Sounds good. I'm guessing, given that it's ten fifty, folks are not inclined to go into closed session. That's fine, we can figure out how to uh, move other stuff forward uh, in the interim. Anything else before we adjourn?
Policy, should we write you to talk about?
We write the policy and then discuss it, is that the process?
What's the question?
We wanna make a policy change.
Public comment.
A public comment?
Yes.
So I think um, you could reach out to the policy committee, which is Colleen and Holly.
I got you, you wanna, we're in, we're on it, right?
Yeah, totally.
Their facts.
The question, I think it would just be like, what are the proposed changes that you wanna make? There are some uh, minimum legal requirements that our policy has to adhere to. And then once there's a proposed set of revisions, we just bring it to the board table for discussion.
Now on it?
Do you, yeah, do you know, you know which, the specifics that um, I'll send it to you.
I was just gonna say, feel free to forward the draft, we can look to make sure those limits and then the board have that in our discussion meeting like that.
You sent the email.
I'll do my first one.
Oh, okay, I was, I, I was gonna just search for you.
Alright, um, motion to adjourn?
Second. Holly, thank you.
Yes.